The Douglas County Board of County Commissioners, Thursday, November 4, will now come to order and we'll begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Gardner.
Thank you. Would you please join me, gentlemen, take your hats off if you're not military? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to start with public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker unless additional time is granted by the board chairperson. The Board of Commissioners uses timing lights to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. You will see a green light when you begin speaking and a yellow light which indicates you have 30 seconds left on the timer and should conclude your comments. Once the light turns red, please sit down and just continue speaking. In addition to opening public comments, public comment will allow also to be taken on administrative agenda items that are identified for possible action. Items two, three, items four, and closing public comment. It is requested that members of the public provide public comment on those agenda items that are identified as for possible action. When those agenda items are considered and not during the opening public comment. At this time, a public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and the control of the Board of County Commissioners. Okay, yes, sir, you have the floor.
Roger Adam. My principal purpose in attending this meeting today is to submit to the Board of County Commissioners a petition that is in opposition to the rezoning of any Douglas Light Industrial parcels to general industrial, including but not limited to, Proposed Ordinance 2021-1583. In the process of obtaining signatures in opposition to this ordinance, I and other concerned citizens first started out at the flower shop, which is just southwest of the intersection of Hayborn and Airport Road. Talked to the owner there who knew nothing about this 26,200 square foot plant that's being proposed and were immediately opposed to it and were surprised that they knew nothing about it. This pattern continued throughout the three businesses that are in that structure that's right next to Meridian Park. And then, went through Meridian Park along with one other person and just stopped at every business along the way of all the businesses that were closest to this parcel. None of those businesses were aware of this plant, all were opposed to it. Wasn't able to contact every business, but I believe when you check through the signatures, you'll see at least 10 from owners or employees of those businesses. What does this tell us about the Planning Commission who recommended this ordinance to you? About their outreach to the community? Is that the type of government we want in our county? Also, during that Planning Commission meeting, there was, on the subject of outreach, one of the Planning Commissioners asked, should they contact the airport board to get their input? And, but the Planning Commission decided not to do that because they didn't have to legally when they consulted with their attorney, at least that was my perception. Also, during the meeting, the staff was advising the Commissioners, said there were no residences that were within two miles of the proposed plant. But all you have to do is go to Trent Tholins County Assessor website and you'll come up with 950 Airport Road, 998 Airport Road, 2298 Hayborn Road, and 2360 Hayborn Road, all shown as residences, either with or without agriculture. You'll also see if you drive your vehicle and look at the odometer, that they're all less than two miles. In fact, my reading was less than one mile from the proposed plant. If that impacts your decision, that's certainly bad information that was passed on by the Planning Commission. Is that it? Oh, yes, I sure do. I just have, I can just make one more statement, would take about a minute. I could go on for at least an hour. Doesn't the master plan designate the airport community as a state-of-the-art transportation hub? Why would you vote to place an enormous 26,200 square foot concrete crushing, demolition, waste processing, scrap metal processing plant in your state-of-the-art transportation hub, airport community for a California firm? I could go on a lot more, but thank you for giving me an extra minute.
Yes, sir, thank you for your comments. All right, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. My name is Jim Jackson and on behalf of myself and all of my neighbors, we would like to thank Commissioner Tarkinian, Commissioner Gardner, Sheriff Coverly, and a special thank you to Mr. Cates' office and the people in his office for organizing the meeting in our neighborhood yesterday. We found it to be very beneficial. Our neighbors were very pleased with a lot of the answers that we got. The BLM people that Mr. Cates had arranged to be there were very informative. They've offered up some of the information that we wanted. I'm going to be contacting the head of the BLM district and I'm going to be contacting Courtney for some of the information they were going to forward to me so that we could take a look at the maps for the restricting of the camping in some of the areas out in the BLM, which would answer a lot of the questions that we had. But just on behalf of everybody, I wanted to thank you all very much for that. It was, I know it was a hassle getting everybody there all at the same time, but we certainly do appreciate it. And we had a pretty good turnout from our neighbors. I think the only one that wasn't there, she's back in Spain right now. Finally made it, so she got out of Reno with no problems. But again, thank you very much, we really appreciate it, so that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Robert Pullman for the record. Last night at the town amendment meeting, it was requested from, one of the agenda items was to have this town staff support the county in developing a government facility out on Buckeye. And I guess the first item that will probably be there is the Judicial Center that are already in the planning works on the improvement plan. And also was brought out that the fire district is also interested in obtaining some site out there on the public facility. There's 60 acres out there that's designated for public facilities and education. So, I had to point out that if we're going to go through with this, that Buckeye has to be made an emergency exit road. And as Community Development Director stated at the time that the park's specific plan was approved, that we really need to raise Buckeye between Hayborn Road and the sheriff's facility, two feet with culverts underneath to take the floodwater. So, that's something you're going to have to go back and look at. From a budget standpoint, I see the Judicial Center will probably be built in 23, 24 fiscal year, which is two years from now. So, you should plan on some additional cost in order to create this county center. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jim Slade. A great many places in the master plan and the Minden-Gardenville plan for prosperity talk about preserving the traditional and historic nature of those two principal towns in the Carson Valley. There's also abundant support for retaining the small businesses in those towns. Those qualities are an important part of what make Minden and Gardenville the centerpiece of our county. Nothing is more contrary to those principles than having a Walmart at each end of Highway 395 in our small county. Nothing more clearly states, welcome to any town, USA. There's been much talk over the years of prohibiting big box stores in the heart of the valley. Over recent years, a variety of county commissioners, planning commissioners, and members of the public have voiced support for prohibiting any big box stores south of Micah Drive. That would not only preserve the traditional character of our towns, but would also help protect the small businesses that are so important to our community. I urge community development, with the board's direction and support, to bring forward an ordinance that would do just that. This is the time to do that. On another topic, the normal procedure for many years for the required two readings of an ordinance was to have a full and complete presentation of the proposed ordinance at the first reading, complete with staff and applicants, presentations, questions from the board, public comments, further board discussion, and a vote. The second reading was often more perfunctory, although occasionally additional information was brought forward, whether by staff, the applicant, the public, or board members, that caused reconsideration of the ordinance. Unfortunately, for some inexplicable reason, that's changed in the last couple of years. Now, the first reading is for presentation only. Staff makes an all-too-brief explanation. The agenda packet is short and presents almost no information to commissioners or the public. It usually takes less than five minutes. This is not in the best interest of the board or the public. Agenda item seven today, a proposed zoning map amendment from light industrial to general industrial near the intersection of Airport and Hayborn, is just such a case. Doesn't address the required findings for such a zoning map amendment, nor does it even show the master plan and actual land use or zoning of the surrounding parcels. Why should the board or the public have to wait another month just to get that basic information? Don't you think that the more information is better than less information and that sooner is presented to the board and the public is better? How can you even allow a first reading that doesn't include even the most basic information? Do you feel it's in the board and the public's interest to have to wait until less than a week before a decision has to be made? And I would also urge you to revert to the previous procedure and have complete presentations and vote at the first reading of all ordinances. Thank you.
I'm here today in concern for our kids, grandkids, and great-grandkids' future and future generations. Today, COVID-19 and 5G being used as cover to bring in, starting the New World Order by the New World Order puppet elites for the Great Reset, being brought in by COVID-19 and 5G. COVID-19 cover for the death effects of 5G. Continuing from the last open public comment. Japan leaders, part of CEPI Coalition Epidemic Preparedness Innovations, that deal in vaccines, went along with the globalists pushing COVID-19 in the country's Olympics. A scare tactic to take in vaccines contaminated to be activated by 5G within months to kill body cells, us called COVID-19. Japan in the Olympics seen by the whole world, scare tactic, some scare tactics used. Japan people boycotting the Olympics nearly empty bleachers. Everyone, especially athletes and coaches, wearing masks to emphasize scaring the public watching TV worldwide from a fake COVID-19 pandemic. By Japan showing not wanting a infusion of the world's peoples due to COVID-19 fake pandemic, a worldwide scare tactic. COVID-19 deceit of war by the New World Order, the top 1% of the top 1% of the world's wealthiest elites, those who don't give a damn about you and I, those elitists behind the scenes creating all the wars and depressions intentionally. The banking, 5G, the World Trade Center, COVID-19, the Asia, Middle East, South, and Central American wars, et cetera, and fighting in the streets worldwide sponsored by the likes of George Soros, et cetera, for the Rothschild Franks, controllers of Israel using computer-backed doors and controlling the world elites. The banking, financial, military, and political scams and lies. 5G military weapons uses pulsating military waves in conjunction with photons, light energy, that way, the waves that can be condensed into spherical beam that can kill everyone and everyone and everything, aimed at targets including humans. Also activating through milliamp chemicals in the brain, some from vaccines that can control human body functions, emotions, and feelings. Some activated by certain pulse frequencies, controlling the human body, sending certain pulse frequencies. To be continued in the next public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Marsha, are there any, is there any further public comment from the audience? Do we have anybody on Zoom?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson for the record. We do have a few people online participating. I have one caller I'll check with first. Caller, do you have public comment, opening public comment?
Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, Mr. Cates, Jay Duda for the record. I'm calling because good government requires community participation. Many of us in this community consider the master plan as a good faith agreement that has been reviewed and updated over many years. Just last year, it was a huge project to review and update this master plan. Now, a fairly new property owner is applying for rezoning from light industrial to general industrial for a nine-acre parcel near Airport and Hayborn Roads. Yesterday, I visited this area and spoke with many business people in the Meridian Business Park. It's a beautiful, very nicely developed multimillion-dollar business park. The zoning is light industrial. Some owners have been there for decades, paying taxes to support this county. Other owners saved for years in order to start a business. One man saved for 30 years before he could open and now pays thousands of dollars every month to the county. It's a cutting-edge business with technology to match. One thing all these business people had in common, no one received information from the county on the zoning change to the parcel located so close to all of them. Was the lack of communication, an oversight, or poor judgment, or an act of disrespect? I don't have the answer. But the master plan has the correct zoning now, light industrial. It's obvious that general industrial is not a good map with the existing business parks. Support the master plan and keep the light industrial zoning in place. The current business community deserves to be respected by keeping the good faith agreement with zoning. Lastly, a shout-out to firefighters and law enforcement. Bravo, good job. Thank you. Bye.
Mr. Chair, no further public comment at this time.
Thank you, Marsha. See no further public comment. Public comment will be closed and we'll proceed with the approval of the agenda for possible action. Approval of the proposed agenda, the Board of Commissioners reserves the right to take items in a different order to accommodate business and in the most efficient manner to combine two or more agenda items for consideration and to remove items from the agenda or delay discussion relating to items on this agenda. Do we have an approval, a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that there are some changes to the agenda as presented.
Yes, there are. Item number one on the agenda is being delayed until hopefully the next board meeting, the young lady that is going to receive the proclamation is out of town. The other item is item 11, which was improperly agendized and will be delayed for further discussion. It's a little complicated and this will give the Commissioners time to review this thing, this item, and get a better handle on it. So, those are the two items that are being delayed until another meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the agenda be approved with the exception of the removal of item one and item 11.
Second motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Rice, a second by Commissioner Noesad. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries 5-0. Don't we have to approve the pass agenda? I don't see it on here. No, okay. All right. So moving on ahead to the administrative agenda, item number one is pulled to a further meeting. Item number two.
Mr. Chair, I believe we need to go to the consent calendar first.
Move to approve the consent calendar, items A through M. Do you hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, with the, with no one wishing to have anything pulled, I move that we approve the consent calendar items A through M.
Second motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Rice, a second by Commissioner Noesad. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries 5-0. Now moving on to the administrative calendar. Item one has been moved to a further meeting. We'll go on to item number two for presentation only. Presentation from the Division of Water Resources.
But for the sake of anyone who's not, I will kind of start with the basics. I do want to start with the point that water issues are, can be extraordinarily complicated and there's a lot of history and a lot of different expertise around the state. But again, I'll just, I'll just start with kind of a basic framework. So really the core principles of Nevada water law. Let me start with this. So the Division of Water Law, of Division of Water Resources is the state agencies that's responsible for administering Nevada water law. All right, so the basics, the basic core principles are prior appropriation, beneficial use, where prior appropriation states similar to all sort of intermountain western states. All water belongs to the public. Anyone can obtain a water right to beneficially use the water as long as you're continually using water under your water right, you can preserve that right. If you stop using it, then it's, then it's potentially subject to being lost and being, that water being made available to the next person in priority. So some of the services that the division provides to the, to the community are keeping historic records, keeping records of water rights, updating those, processing changes of existing water rights. We also oversee the drilling of water wells and we administer the provisions governing the safety of dams. We answer a lot of questions when people, when members of the public have questions about water rights. Also, some specific areas that we work on are, we administer channel clearance funds that are often used within Douglas County along the Carson River. We approve and track aquifer storage and recovery programs around the state. We also maintain and provide a lot of baseline data with regard to water use, groundwater levels, and pumpage. With regard to our staff being out and around in the, in the county, our staff are doing field investigations to review beneficial use, proofs of beneficial use. We inspect active drilling operations. We're doing inventories of water use and publishing an annual groundwater pumpage inventory for, by basin. And we also investigate alleged violations of anyone illegally, illegally using water. So I want to make the point that generally speaking, what our division deals with is water quantity, not water quality. So we're talking about water budgets, water availability, not issues such as contamination or drinking water quality or things of that nature. Just for your awareness, some current issues that we're dealing with in our office, number one, I would say is staffing and budgets. We have kind of a reduced staff and we've had that since the last legislative session. And so one of our main priorities is really retaining and training up new staff and doing what we can to preserve the institutional knowledge. We're also working on digitizing a lot of our records so that we can protect those historic documents and also make that information readily available to the public and provide more services through, through our website and so on. And kind of trying to do, do a little bit more with less because our staffing and our budget has been really, really stable and sometimes in a number of areas, water issues have just gotten more complex. And really with that, I want to bring Dan into this conversation and, and if we could specifically talk about the things that we see in Douglas County that are at the forefront of our, our attention and if you have any specific areas of concern or questions, we could tailor our discussion in that direction. If there's, if there aren't any specific questions, we can go on. Yes?
This is open to public comments so we can have some interaction with questions for Mr. Randall, how to pronounce your name? Randall?
Dan Randalls.
Dan Randall?
For the record.
Okay. And Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rice?
I have a question. In some parts of our county, we're having a problem with nitrates. And it's my understanding that most of this problem from nitrates comes from people's septic systems who have not been maintained properly. Is that correct? Is that one of the problems that we're having? And if so, who's responsible for monitoring the septic systems?
Well, the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection has some jurisdiction over how septics are permitted and water quality that's affected by septic systems. And our division doesn't directly have jurisdiction over water quality. But I think that the, the next, the next topic on your agenda from the USGS will be specifically addressing that. Maybe, maybe that would be a good place to get that answer.
If I can add also to that answer, while we don't deal directly with that water quality issue, our office, the Division of Water Resources in the past has coordinated with Douglas County and with environmental protection in issuing a state engineer's order in the area that you're talking about that does not allow more, any additional water rights to be moved into that subarea of Carson Valley. So if someone is looking to build a home or start a business or anything of that nature in that area and they do not currently have water rights, they need to acquire water rights within that area so as to not exacerbate the problem. And that is a, I don't recall, I think I might have it here in my notes, when that order was issued. But it's, it's been a standing order with the state engineer for a number of years.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Noesad.
Forgive me, I'm having a little difficulty with my throat today. One of the things that we're concerned about is water quantity. And I think that's probably in your bailiwick. And how do we, how, how does the state geological group measure the quality of the, or the depth of the aquifer? Now, I say aquifer and understand that we're living in a bowl and that the aquifers that are further up the hill are draining down into the good one down here in Minden. So how do you measure that?
Is it off? Okay. The, the river is clearly the dominant hydrologic feature. And when we look at just groundwater availability, we generally administer water rights on a basin scale. And we look at that, that natural water budget as a guideline for whether or not, or to what extent groundwater is available to develop and use. And so, so our office relies on existing hydrologic studies of, of the basins that evaluate the natural groundwater recharge and the discharge to, to kind of set a cap on over, over the long period of time, what would be the maximum amount of water that would, that could be developed over the long period of time without, without degrading the, the aquifer, you know, and depleting, depleting it so that it's, that water supply is protected for the future.
So the question now becomes, what's the condition of our water supply?
I would say that, you want to go for it, Dan?
Sure. The, Dan Randalls, for the record, again, the condition of our water supply in the Carson Valley is that it currently is within the calculated perennial yield that is determined by those analysis that have been done in the past. Appropriated rights in the basin would calculate that number to exceed that perennial yield. But based on our analysis and doing those studies and our inventories that Adam had mentioned earlier, that we find that not everybody pumps their, to the full extent of their rights. And that's one of the things that is helping us and helping the community to manage water rights in this area, in the basin, and to make sure that we are staying within that, that perennial yield estimated recharge. With that said, you know, some of the items that you're bringing up with the, with the water quality issues, we are trying to coordinate and we're trying to assist with other agencies, being USGS or Federal Water Master's Office, and maintaining our records and helping to manage and maintain their records as well.
And following right behind that is the recharge rate. We've been in a drought for a while and looking at some of the studies of the water content of the snow cap, that's been in continual decline over the last few years. So, I mean, you know you got the water, but if you're not recharging it, you still draw the way you want to draw? I don't think we should, I guess.
It's certainly a concern when we have multiple dry years sequentially. You know, this drought effects are compounding. You know, there's, the aquifers have, you know, have some buffering capacity and, you know, it's certainly historically, that's, you know, we get big recharge events infrequently. You know, it's, a lot of our recharge happens in those really big years rather than on a consistent annual basis. Carson Valley is situated in a good spot because you're relatively, you know, high in the watershed. There's a lot more water. The impacts up here are not nearly as severe as we can, we see in a lot of other parts of the state that are more at the terminus of these flow systems. And, you know, I, for long-term water security is to see what's happening in these, in these more water restricted areas because those are where the, where the problems are so concentrated.
Like Las Vegas.
Las Vegas is a whole nother set of issues with the Colorado River. I'm thinking more about the terminus of, of the, you know, of the Walker River, the Carson River, the Truckee, the Humboldt, all that are, you know, terminal rivers. You just have a natural advantage when you're in the upper part of the watershed. But nevertheless, you know, in a prior appropriation system, you have to think about the whole system and how efficiently water's getting, getting around to be served to different water rights.
Well, thank you for your responses.
Any further questions? Yes, sir.
My name's Jim Jackson again. We have a question. We have a well on our property. We're talking about the aquifer and measuring just how much water is in the aquifer and how big it is. What is the length of time it takes from when we have a very wet season to the aquifer being recharged from that water? Like if we had a few years ago, the Washoe Lake was dry, Tahoe was down quite a ways, and within a matter of a month, everything was full and overflowing. That water now is going to recharge, I'm assuming, the aquifer. How long does it take from that period before it gets to the aquifer and recharges it?
It's, it's really site-specific. In some places, it's going to be nearly immediate. In other places, it can take years. And the, and the way to look at that is to monitor your water levels in your well over a period of time, you know, take, take a measurement in the spring, take a measurement in the fall, look at, look at the rainfall data or the river flow data and you could start to see a pattern and learn about how your own system works.
Okay. Good.
My name is Dan St. John. I live out in Gardenville on the east side. And I guess my question, and maybe you have some experience on this, is we've had our water table measured when we first moved in over two years ago and then we had it measured recently when we had to replace the well pump. And the water table had dropped 30 feet in less than two years. And I guess my question is, is that something we should be alarmed about or is that normal fluctuation? I know we've been in an extended drought. And while you're thinking about that, I did want to see if I could respond to an earlier question about septic tanks. I spent my career as a water engineer and have a lot of experience in wastewater management and so forth. Septic tanks do produce nitrate as a result of breaking down the wastewater from the households. And that is a common reaction in a septic tank and it's a common situation where you have intense septic use. And I'm saying septic on, on more than, or I should say on lots that are maybe less than an acre. And of course, that's all site-specific. But we all know of areas, including Silver Springs, certainly Lake Tahoe in the early years, had to get rid of septic tanks because of the migration of nitrates that it produces. But they also need to be maintained, so I think that point's well, well taken.
Dan Randalls, for the official record. And so your, your comments about the drawdown in your specific well over a two-year period, it's, it's a little hard for us to, to give an exact answer to that. I was just mentioning to Adam, that's a small sample size, you know, to only calculate over two years.
Right.
And this is one of the reasons that we conduct some of the work that we do in the area is we have been taking water levels in wells in the Carson Valley in some cases since, I believe, the 80s. And it's to track that fluctuation in groundwater levels. And we don't check every well.
Sure.
It's a, it's a grid pattern that we feel gives us the best representation of the health of the area and the conditions that are happening. But that's something that in your specific area on the east side, that it would be interesting to see if our monitoring wells are reflecting a similar drawdown situation to what you're telling us. And some of those monitoring wells, those aren't just ones that are measured by our office. These are also wells that, as I mentioned, that other agencies help us collect that data. So this is, you know, again, USGS and other, other entities. So it, I, I can't say for sure if that, it would be a typical item or if that is just your well-specific if something is going on. And we want to use the, our data to kind of, kind of look at that and analyze.
All right. Well, it sounds like something for further thought. And if I just had one more question, and it sort of spawned on me when, when I heard the mention of Las Vegas or Clark County. Have we had applications or interest in inner-county transfer of water from Douglas County? And/or does the county have a policy on that issue?
The county transfers water to Carson City. Carson City has water rights.
Right.
We do not sell the water. They have the water rights in Minden. And what the county does is we contract with them to provide the pumping and the treatment of that water.
I see.
And they pump about a million gallons a day.
Thank you. Thank you.
But that's something that, in your specific area on the east side, that it would be interesting to see if our monitoring wells are reflecting a similar drawdown situation to what you're telling us. And some of those monitoring wells, those aren't just ones that are measured by our office. These are also wells that, as I mentioned, that other agencies help us collect that data. So this is, you know, again, USGS and other, other entities. So it, I, I can't say for sure if that would be a typical item or if that is just your well-specific if something is going on. And we want to use the, our data to kind of, kind of look at that and analyze.
All right. Well, it sounds like something for further thought. And if I just had one more question, and it sort of spawned on me when, when I heard the mention of Las Vegas or Clark County. Have we had applications or interest in inter-county transfer of water from Douglas County? And, and/or does the county have a policy on that issue?
The county transfers water to Carson City. Carson City has water rights.
Right.
We do not sell the water. They have the water rights in Minden. And what the county does is we contract with them to provide the pumping and the treatment of that water.
I see.
And they pump about a million gallons a day.
Good. Thank you. Thank you.
I have four somewhat separate questions. Would you like to answer them one at a time or would you like to me to run through them quickly? And you can take notes and try to answer all of them.
Let's run through, let's do all of them.
Together.
If you read all of them.
Okay. Fine. You know, we hear anecdotal stories about wells going dry in Douglas County and needing to be either deepened or redrilled, especially in the Ruensdroth and Johnson Lane areas. Does your department keep track of private wells that need to be deepened or redrilled? And if so, how prevalent is that problem? Secondly, we also hear that our aquifer is dropping. Given that that changes depending on whether it's been a wet or a dry year for recent history, what is the overall trend in your estimation? Not an exact number, but I'm sure there is some trend. What would that be? On perennial yield, can you tell us what numbers you are using for the Carson Valley at this time? Some have suggested that it is an exact number of 49,000 acre-feet, while others say it is a range, saying it's from 35,000 to 53,000 acre-feet. What numbers does your department use and with what degree of confidence? And lastly, I think most people would expect some changes due to climate change that will be, have started to come our way and will continue to come our way and hopefully not be accelerated too quickly, but we certainly have to be prepared for that. Obviously, we have already in general, the trend is higher snow levels, earlier melts, less surface water in the summer. How does your department take climate change into account with your projections? Thank you.
Do you want to do the?
Which one of the first ones?
Yep.
Dan Rendles for the record. In regards to Jim's first question of wells drying up and to be specific into the Ruensdroth areas and stuff like that, I think, if I remember my areas correctly, Ruensdroth would probably be one of the more established areas of Gardenville. So I'd expect that to be some of the more older domestic wells or even older irrigation wells. And, you know, one of the things that we oftentimes include in our permit terms and permits when you get them from the state of Nevada is to expect a reasonable lowering of the groundwater level when those permits are issued. And that's something that our office has planned on even before, you know, we've been there going back many decades. And that that is, you know, it's expected that water level's going to drop over time. It's, it's just something that happens. And in regards to the redrilling of wells or the wells needing to be reconditioned, it's not uncommon. It happens throughout the state. I don't think that it's any more prevalent in this area than anywhere else in the state of Nevada. There might just be a few more wells drilled in our locations, but that's, that's more of a cause of the population more than anything. And on, which kind of leads back into the, his second question about the aquifer dropping. And it, it does drop and it, we expect it to drop some and not regain a certain amount. But as Adam was talking about earlier, that when we have those recharge years, those, those recharge years can come in fluctuation of not, you know, every other year or every third year. But when they do come, we definitely do see a bump in the aquifer in our groundwater level measurements and in those statistics that we keep on the data in our division. And a lot of that data is available online to anybody to look that up. Go ahead.
With regard to drawdown in the aquifers, I think it's important to think about the different parts of, and just talking about Carson Valley again, you know, the areas that are, that are near to the river or in hydraulic contact, contact with the river or are recharged through the ditches and so on, have a lot of different response than some of the other outlying areas like Ruensdroth and Johnson Lane and Fish Springs. Those, those sub-basins, if I can call it that, up on the east side are areas of probably greater concern for protecting the existing primarily domestic wells that are up in those areas because the recharge is, is much more limited coming off the pine nuts. And, and you can see in some of those like locations at least, more a long-term declining trend. Whereas when you're near the river, you just, you know, you get those, the recharge and it's, it's, it's pretty stable over a long period of time. The greater concern down there might be long-term impacts on the, on the river and how much of that groundwater pumping affects flows in the river. That's a little bit hard to put your finger on, but it's, it's an area of ongoing concern. And that's, maybe perhaps less so on the Carson River, but statewide, that's one of the major issues that we're dealing with. The next question was on perennial, perennial yield question.
Oh, yeah.
And you're right, the number 49,000 is the number that we publicly have, you know, we publish, and that's the number we cite as the perennial yield. As Dan was mentioning earlier, the mean annual pumping is considerably below that. So my recollection is that 49,000 comes from a study from, from Doug Maurer with the USGS in the, in the, maybe in the eighties or the nineties. And that, that's the most recent sort of comprehensive analysis. He used a really, a typical or a standard method of estimating recharge, and that's where that number comes from. There's, there were previous studies that, that estimated a lesser amount, but it's important to remember that perennial yield, it is just a, it's a guideline. There is a lot of variability interannually or over, over time, and it's, it's a very helpful guideline. We need it for administering water rights, but, you know, ultimately what we look at is the amount of, of water that can be sustainably developed. And that might depend on where you are within the basin. And it, it might be, you know, the perennial yield is a good guideline for that, but, but there's other things to think about when we're looking at sustainability of groundwater supply and availability for, for any additional demands on the resource. And then the last question was about climate change, and, and you're absolutely right. I mean, the, the data is, is very consistent and compelling. The, the impacts that this gentleman mentioned are exactly what's happening. Earlier peak, you know, less or higher snow levels, more precipice rain rather than snow, and an earlier, earlier peak snow, peak runoff in the spring. And the consequences are that you have a, an increased demand on supplemental groundwater use later in the season. So a lot of, a lot of the over, the overappropriation again that we have on books in Carson Valley is not used because it's supplemental groundwater. So it's only there, it's only needed when the surface water isn't primarily available. But if that, you know, if that demand on supplemental pumping increases, then that's something to really, to watch and track and see how that affects the basin.
Are there any further questions from the audience? Do we have any question, anybody online? Oh, excuse me. Jim, do you have? Can I just ask one brief follow-up?
Sure.
Thank you for trying to answer all my questions. I know that they don't all have exact answers, and I appreciate your trying to ask. The one that, question I had that I don't think was really answered, or if you did, I missed it. When someone, a private well owner, has to redrill their well or deepen it, do they have to come to your department for a permit? And if so, is there data on that that, that's available to the public so we don't just go with anecdotal stories about hearing that people have done this? Are there numbers that should be accessible to the public? Thank you.
Dan Rendles for the record. And yes, there are records with our office. It's under our well drilling logs, and they are available online. If you have a specific site, that site would let you know when the well was originally drilled with the log if it was given to us properly. And that log would be on file. And then the homeowner would not apply to redrill. It would be the well driller who they hired that would actually be filing that paperwork with our offices, filling out that replacement well log and giving us the information of the well drilling itself, telling us what the depth was and the static water level that they came up with. And they're required to file that with our office. With that said, I will say that, you know, sometimes you will go to our site looking for a well log. And once again, staffing promises know nothing new to our agency or other agencies of the state. And back in the eighties and nineties, having compliance with well drillers was a little bit difficult. So we do not have every single well log. We do not have a record of every single well being drilled. We have tried to keep and have as good of a record as we possibly can, but that oversight and following up with every single well driller and every single hole that they punched is, as you can imagine, be quite difficult for the entire state.
Where is your website for that information?
The website is water.nb.gov. And the information that I was referencing is a well drilling log.
Just if I could get a little more clarification. So, sorry. Without having to look at individual wells to see if they've been deepened or not, is there someplace on any of your websites where it would say, this many wells in this area in this year had to be deepened or redrilled? Because that's, that's, you know, I don't want to look through every well log for every well in Ruensdroth and Johnson Lane. I would hope that there would be someplace, and maybe there is, maybe there isn't, where I could see in 1997, there were two, and in 2003, there were six. See if there's a trend, see if it's increasing, see where those areas are. That's, that's what I'm really trying to get at.
Yeah, the well log database search, it actually gives you the ability to search by section, township, and range. And there are a number of parameters within that search engine that you can, you can really narrow it down, or you can just search every single well that's ever been drilled in the Carson Valley. So it, it all depends on how you use that search engine to really drill it down.
Commissioner Norris, add?
Yes. I don't want to see like, seem like a nag, but my background's in quality assurance. In terms like reasonable drop, can you define that any more closely than that?
That's a good question. And it, it, you know, that's a term that is in statute, and it's been a, you know, it's been a question for as long as I've been around and trying to define exactly what that means. And it, I, all I can say is it depends on the circumstances, but it's, it's, it's something that we struggle with.
Okay, you quoted a study some while back, as you said, was a very, very good study. When was that study done? What year?
The study that I mentioned was a USGS study by, by Doug Maurer that estimated water budgets for Carson Valley or for the Carson River, the sub-basins of the Carson River. And it was USGS Water Investigations Report 86, which refers to 1986, number 432. So it's, you know...
It's 30, 40 years old.
Yeah. Oh, it's dated. It's dated. And a lot of the, a lot of the science that we rely upon for water budgets statewide is very much is dated. It goes back in some cases, you know, a lot of them are in the sixties and the seventies. Not that they're bad, but we're increasingly being challenged on our reliance of those data. And where we can, we're trying to either update the science or get, help find funding to do the studies to update it based on current methods and data that we have available today. So that's, it's not unusual for us to rely on, on a study from 1986, but it's not necessarily bad.
And one more question regarding the Carson River. About three months ago, I stopped at the Cradle Ball Bridge and I looked down at the water, no water. Grass was growing up out of the riverbed, and there was a trickle, no two ways. But how much, I'm visualizing the water coming down on either of the forks, going down the valley, and it's going at a, not a small clip, it's going pretty good. How, how much can we percolate out of that stream into the aquifer?
The, the percolation rate is, is a function of the hydraulic conductivity of the streambed and, and the, whether, whether or not the groundwater is, is below or above the water table. So it's a hydraulic calculation, and the velocity of the, of the flow doesn't matter. It's, it's just the head and hydraulic conductivity.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Martha Johnson for the record. I do have one caller I'll check with. Caller, do you have any questions for this item, item number two, regarding the Division of Water Resources? No further comment at this time. Thank you.
Okay, I have a question. And you can answer it yes or no. Has it been your observation that residential development has a big impact on aquifers? Yes or no?
I would have to say that, that, um, yes. Any groundwater development has...
Thank you. Right there. All right. We're pumping a million gallons a day from the aquifer here in Minden to Reno, or to Carson. And there is no recharge. So there hasn't really been any in the last decade. We had one good snow season. And I don't know where the recharge for that aquifer is coming from, if, if at all. So between the county and Carson City and, and the residential usage and the industrial usage, the discharge is exceeding the recharge. Could we make that assumption?
Um, there's some, there's some terms and subjects getting mixed up a little bit there. I'm not sure if I can answer it.
Okay, we're using a lot of water.
Here, one moment, let me, just for context, when we're talking about using water and, I'll just refer to the inventory work that we do, which kind of helps summarize water use. And the vast majority of water is, is used for irrigation. And mostly, most of the water that is now used for municipal or quasi-municipal residential development originated from irrigation use. So the way I look at it is that, yes, all manners of use have a, I mean, we use a lot of water. It has a big impact on the, on the water cycle in the basin. But in a lot of ways, it, you know, just looking at the water budget, changing, you know, different manners of use, that, that changes over time, but the, the total usage hasn't changed all that much. So I, I kind of look at it that way, from a, from a whole basin scale water budget.
The Carson River flows from south to north, correct? Because of gravity. And I understand that this situation with water and aquifers is very dynamic. And in this Carson Valley, we have more than one aquifer. Agree to that?
Yes.
Okay. So the water in these... Okay. So the water in these aquifers, they're in the perimeter of rock and it's being tugged on by gravity. And because of gravity, it's being tugged from south to north, just like the Carson River, albeit slow. So on the periphery, we have aquifers that are replenishing the Minden Aquifer because it is the low point in the valley. Is that correct?
Water flows from, from uphill to downhill. That's correct.
Okay. So albeit slope, we have aquifers that are being depleted at the expense of water being pulled from the Minden Aquifer because of gravity and slope and things of that nature on top of residential construction. That a true assumption?
That's pretty general, but I, I think I'm following your, your line of reasoning here.
The reason I bring this up is that we do have some areas in the valley. And we have these GIDs and some of them are looking at catastrophic failure with their aquifers. One of them comes to mind, they used to have nine wells serving 4,300 homes. They're down to three right now. And the wells that have gone out of operation have been because of silt buildup and arsenic buildup, which are indicators they're just not getting adequate replenishment water. Because of the Ruensstroth area, Fish Springs over by the Pine Nuts, the only water that they get is the runoff from the mountains and not the Carson River. And so most of the people we know out there, they have gone deeper out of necessity. I know some people used to be at 10 feet, now they're down about 200. So the point we're trying to make here is that development, it must be development or being siphoned off because of gravity to replenish the Minden Aquifer, which is water being pulled out because of development. All of this is primarily a condition of development. Because these aquifers, they've been there like four, 500 years, just sitting down there doing nothing in the dark. And all of a sudden, we start putting straws down there. And it just stands to reason that they're being depleted at a more rapid rate than they're being replenished. And it's because of development. Is that, am I making a correct assumption?
Well, absolutely. I mean, everywhere where there's intensive groundwater development and there can be a range of responses, but there's, it's certainly not unusual that you have well failures or drawdown, whether that's locally, whether that's really local or widespread, is, you know, it just depends on the location. But yeah, what you're speaking to is the basic truth about groundwater development everywhere.
All right, thank you. I'm just trying to get, you know, I've talked to hydrologists and any kind of ologists there is. And thank you, you're just reinforcing what has been our observation. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Norris, add.
One quick observation. The 49,000, I think that's acre feet. Did you really explain that? Okay, good. A million gallons a day is about two and a half acre feet. Comes out to 20,000 acre feet a year. Now bounce out against the 49,000 and you're already going into a deficit. I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about the development bangle part of it too. Because when you start putting 4,000, 500 houses into a development and then follow it up with at least that many to come, it's going to add up real quick, especially if you've got a family of four. Now, a family of two, and I've run the numbers on what I do, and it's pretty low. But when you start throwing the kids in, I'm not throwing them in, but add them into the mix, that usage goes up quite drastically. That's a piece of it.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. I, I think that the, there's just a wide range of considerations. And sometimes there's really localized effects that have to be looked at carefully. And it's, we just want to be careful about making presumptions about, about concepts that aren't, that aren't borne out by the data. So I, you know, my reaction to what you're expressing is that that reinforces the need to continue to monitor water level data and really understand what happens when we pump groundwater in different locations within the basins.
Any further questions from the board? The audience? Gentlemen, thank you very much. And it is a major consideration for Nevadans and everybody in the West. And thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for having us.
Dr. Norano, are you in the audience? Is he here? Oh, he's online. Oh, okay.
I'm online.
Okay, there you are. Okay, this is for presentation only. I'll do a quick introduction. By the US Geological Survey, USGS, concerning nitrates and their impact on the aquifers of the Carson Valley. Dr. Norano, am I pronouncing it right?
Yes.
I first saw this presentation at the Carson Water Conservancy and it was very informative. So we asked if he would do the same thing here for the board. I think you will all find this very interesting and informative. So doctor, you have the floor.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to talk about this, about nitrates in, in the Carson Valley. And I'll just mention that the USGS is actively evaluating water level data, nitrate and arsenic data from Carson Valley to try to get a better handle of the trends. And we'll be documenting that, those results in the next year or so. But we just got started on a project to evaluate that. But today, I'm going to be mentioning a publication that was produced by our office in 2013 as it pertains to nitrates. And, and since then, there's been another investigation that looked at the response of nitrate discharge from groundwater to the Carson River. And that was done by Nancy Alvarez and others in 2018. Both these reports and others are available on the USGS website. And I can provide links to those if necessary. But in general, most of you are aware that nitrate has health implications for those that are consuming domestic water pumped by, by private wells. Nitrate can affect infants and, and pregnant, pregnant women and those people who have other types of hypertension or, or other pre-existing conditions. And the MCL for nitrate, the maximum contaminant level for nitrate set by the EPA is 10 milligrams per liter, just for reference. The, the study that, that was produced by Nancy, when, when done, they identified that most of the, or a good contribution of the algal bloom issues that are in the Carson River because of excess nutrients entering the stream system and those excess nitrogen from groundwater. And so in sensitive environments, sensitive stream environments such as ecologically sensitive, such as the Carson River and even the Truckee River, those systems are very sensitive to inputs of nitrogen and phosphorus from, from ag or other urban areas. And the end result is that their system becomes out of balance and can have impacts on the, on the fish ecology or water quality within the stream itself. As a background, during the time that we investigated nitrates, there was a comprehensive sampling effort that was done in the Carson Valley area, in the Ruensstroth and Johnson Lane and other areas outside of there. I noted them here with the concentrations denoted by color. You see that many of the concentrations are less than one or blue. But we have several areas that are highlighted in orange or yellow in that five to 10 range and a couple that are in greater than, than 10. Again, this was, this is old data, 2008 to 2009 data. Where we, we collected domestic wells to try to assess what the overall distribution of nitrates were for the, for this area, spatially in the aquifer. And what we found was that there's, you know, these hotspots in the Ruensstroth and Johnson Lane and also in the Kimerling Road area adjacent to the Gardner Ville Ranchos that look like they may, they have elevated levels. The findings of this report, we've looked at a number of different indicators. We, we tested the water for apparent groundwater age. The age of the water, as it, as was mentioned earlier, is predicated on how much recharge you get in the mountains and how much is coming from the streams. Many of the wells came in with age distributions that are about 50 years old, meaning that it's fairly recent water. At least for the domestic wells that we were sampling. And what we also found was that in the agricultural areas didn't appear to have much of the impact of nitrates to groundwater. Most of the nitrates were concentrated in those areas where there were high septic densities. So in, in the context of this, I'll be presenting some of the work that we looked at in terms of the septic, as it relates to septic systems. And this is what we would call a conceptual model of how septics, and one person earlier pointed out how nitrates enter the, enter the groundwater through leach fields. And that is correct. They, they come out of the homes through the septic tank. And there's usually a spreading area where that water is, is allowed to percolate through the unsaturated zone. Our bodies excrete urea. I'm sorry. Our bodies excrete urea and it easily converts, converts over to ammonia. And in the unsaturated zone and as, as it enters the groundwater system, it then transforms chemically to nitrate. Along with that, other chemicals like total dissolved solids and chlorides that come out of the leach field use, domestic use, enter the groundwater system itself too. And if you're, if you have a high septic density, you're likely to, to encounter those impacts back into your domestic well if your, if your wells are spaced in close proximity to your septic tank. Our approach for this report, which is documented, is that we, we've looked at this unsaturated transport of nitrate from the septic fields, assuming we know something about domestic use, for a family of four, average use. And we simulated the arrival of that water over time to the aquifer. And what we found was that the older the home, the longer that septic use has been infiltrating that urea into the aquifer down. And so those older homes have the longest period of impact. Whereas recent homes, they still have an impact because many of those homes are developed in really shallow, in areas where the water table's shallow, but in general. The, the longer the impact, the more loading to the aquifer that home may have had over time. The other approach we took was to follow up on the, on the unsaturated movement. Is we, we, we know that there's a lot of groundwater pumping going on in the valley. And so we, we simulated the transport or the movement of that nitrate using a groundwater transport model. And we also looked at this other third contributing factor to nitrate accumulation in the aquifer, which is called denitrification, which is a naturally occurring process that converts the available nitrate with, with available carbon to nitrogen gas. And this can occur under certain circumstances. And we wanted to test out whether the aquifer materials had enough carbon and, and could facilitate this reaction. And our findings was that there was no buildup of nitrogen gas in the samples that we collected, which would indicate that denitrification isn't as a significant player in the reduction of nitrate. And you can also assume that areas where you have high interaction with the stream flow, where stream flow tends to have higher dissolved oxygen levels. So in order for this denitrification process to occur, you have to have very low oxygen level conditions. And as we discussed earlier, recharge from the stream entering the aquifer system will also transport higher levels of oxygen to the aquifer. So that kind of retards this process of denitrification. But overall, from the, from the perspective of a single septic system is about 19 pounds of nitrogen load per year to the aquifer. And so one of the approaches we took was that we needed to understand what level of concentrations are coming out of the leach fields. There's not a whole lot of data in Nevada on this issue. There's some information that was collected in Spanish Springs that we used as a surrogate because it's a similar environment, similar number of homes per household and so on, similar soils, which would, would influence the, the amount of nitrogen coming out of the leach field. And so what, what this is, is a histogram of those concentrations. And we can see that around 60, or this bin here that shows up at 60, but it's actually a median concentrations of 44 milligrams per liter of nitrogen. And we wanted to look at this particular concentration because we were interested to know what is the approximate size of a lot to have an impact on that MCL? In other words, if you had a one acre lot, assuming some factors such as recharge with a concentration of 44 milligrams per liter, would you have an exceedance of 10 MCL? And so there is a, a pretty common computation for this, for this kind of analysis. It's really basic, it's really easy to compute. Doesn't assume anything about groundwater pumping though. But you have, one of the inputs to this calculation is recharge. We know that Carson Valley gets about 4.4 inches per year recharge the aquifer. And so assuming that we take that concentration of 40 or 44 milligrams per liter nitrate from the aquifers, you know, that we know from the Carson, I mean, from the North Valley area, the calculation is telling us that in order to, to, to avoid an exceedance of 10 MCL in the aquifer, your acre lot should be about 15 acres. That's assuming 40 milligrams per liter. If you, let's say, for example, you had a well maintained septic system and your concentrations are much lower coming out of that system. If it's around that 15 milligrams per liter range, you could have an acre lot size of about 2.4 acres, which is, you know, much higher, much smaller lot size. But, you know, the, the concentration, again, is predicated on the recharge of .4. However, as I noted in the slide previous, that this concentration can range quite a bit. And, and those ranges are predicated on how often the septic systems are maintained. And they can be as high as 100. And, and under those circumstances, if you have 100 milligrams per liter coming out of a septic field, you could have an exceedance of 10 MCL and your lot size should be around 44 acres. I mean, this is a very simplistic view of what might be happening, but it's, it's a helpful tool to kind of understand the implication of the, the maintain, maintenance of septic systems as well as other factors like recharge and where you're at in the system. Our findings from the collection of data throughout the valley have also told us something about the influence of the agricultural and rural areas. We found is that where you have the highest concentrations of nitrate is where you have the greatest number of residential homes. And where in, the inverse to that is that the higher area of agriculture or rural community, you have less septic systems and your concentrations are much lower. The higher concentrations that we show here on the lower percentage of the rural and agriculture are associated to those areas that are adjacent to farmland or, or agriculture that, that might be contributing to nitrate to the agricultural area through, through agricultural pumping or, or municipal pumping that's moving the nitrate into those areas. So from a background, we have a regional groundwater flow model that was mentioned earlier. Dick Jaeger from the USGS produced this flow model to answer some specific questions regarding. Are you, I'm sorry, I think my screen just broke out. The USGS produced a flow model, a regional flow model that we use for transport studies for nitrate. And what we wanted to do is look at specific areas, Johnson Lane and Ruins Drop. And these two areas are of interest because Johnson Lane has sixty-two square miles and has a septic density of about twenty-three septics per square mile, about fourteen hundred septic tanks in total. Twenty-six hundred uh domestic wells in this area. Ruins dropped, as pointed out earlier, has had some issues with nitrates. Um has a higher density per per unit area, thirty-six uh septics per square mile with a total of five hundred septic tanks and about five hundred wells. The the scenarios that we ran in the study were based on baseline projections of transport in the Johnson Lane and Ruins drop area from uh continued use and continued pumping from domestic wells to two thousand fifty-nine. And what we did is we looked at two two different hypotheticals. One is that in twenty thirty, remove the septic systems, but you continue to pump the domestic wells. The second um hypothetical was when you remove uh septic tanks, you also remove domestic pumping. And these uh colorized figures here show the distribution of nitrates as transported by the model. And you can see under the baseline prediction, the concentrations are are pretty high towards the north um and in within the the residential areas. When you remove it, when you remove the uh the septics, now the transport is just flowing from uh no recharge from the septics, but just under natural conditions as well as domestic pumping. And you can see that the there's less of the yellow, which is greater than five to ten milligrams per liter, likely because of the removal from the domestic wells. There's still an area there that is greater than ten uh milligrams per liter predicted by the model. The second hypothetical, which is when in twenty thirty, remove the septics and no longer have domestic pumping going on. So whatever impacts that were occurring up to twenty thirty, what was the associated transport of nitrate under that scenario? And you can see that um there is a fair amount of concentrations still within that one to five range. Um and there is an area to the north there that exceed the MCL of ten milligrams per liter. For the Ruins drop area, you can see that under the baseline prediction, and I have these areas computed by uh acres. I'll be showing in a second here, but you can see that there's many areas that are uh isolated red and those again are associated with their older homes that have been contributing nitrates to the aquifer. When you remove septics and you continue to pump the groundwater for domestic use, you can see that much of the the higher concentrations have been removed as well as the uh concentrations between five and ten. And the the second hi hypothetical, uh removing septics in twenty thirty with and no more domestic pumping, you can see that those impacts uh continue to persist over time. Um but you don't, you don't have any concentrations greater than the the MCL. In terms of a summary, we looked at these two different areas uh with the maximum predictions uh of the of the areas of eighteen at Johnson Lane for twenty two for two thousand nine and predicted out those concentrations would be up upwards in thirty uh milligrams per liter, about sixty-nine percent increase. The area at the time predicted in two thousand nine was about a hundred and fifty-six acres of of aquifer, basically in the uh that were contaminated greater than ten MCL. We predict out forward, you see that the concentrations increased by a hundred and thirty-nine percent to three seventy-three. Under those two scenarios, you can see that those percentages uh decrease, the area decreases pretty substantially. And even more so for Ruins drop. Our maximum concentration was predicted at twelve two thousand fifty-nine or the baseline was at nineteen. Taking action at Ruins drop would have a pretty substantial effect on those concentrations for both hypotheticals and um in terms of the area, you see that the increase uh from thirteen to a hundred and twelve for the prediction, about a seven hundred and sixty-nine percent increase. Both of these responses of the hypotheticals resulted in in uh zero acres exceeding the MCL. So in summary, our report findings found that septic systems contributed to the main source of nitrate in the aquifer. The concentrations are dependent on well depth, the density of the of the residential areas that have them, the age of the septic system and the proximity to up gradient septic systems, meaning uh if you're below an area that has high septic use and you're down gradient, I should say, or down down gradient of groundwater movement where that water is being transported naturally or by pumping. Um your your aquifer can be, your well can be affected by the density adjacent to your property. The ability of the aquifer to dilute the leachate has been reduced. Well, I should I just say that because of low recharge in the in the Carson Valley, uh the ability for the aquifer to to have any substantial effect from re from natural recharge on the dilution of that nitrate is is hindered by the fact that we just generally get low recharge. We found that nitrate concentrations reduce rapidly when they're removed. And domestic wells continue to pump and and you know, those of you who are managing these systems um must recognize that that domestic removal of nitrates may not be the best option. Our models are suggesting that nitrate will continue to increase if no actions taking place. And in many areas are going to exceed the MCL of ten milligrams per liter. And I believe that's the end of my presentation. Available for any questions.
Do we have any questions from the audience? Is Mr. Slade still here? Uh Jim Slade. Thank you for that presentation. I thought it was very helpful. My only comment is I know that Mr. Noronho provided because I just saw it out on the table. I went out there to look uh because a lot of his, you know, ever since I had cataract surgery, my vision is twenty fifteen. But I could not read a lot of his charts up there, especially the keys to some of his chart. I think it would have been very helpful to the public and perhaps to some of the commissioners as well. I guess you got it in your packet, but the public did not. And in many cases, PowerPoint presentations like Mr. Noronho's are available on the desk outside. They were not today. That's why I sat out in the hallway where there's a screen where I could sit six feet away and read things easily. But sitting thirty or forty feet away in this room, it was almost impossible to see some of his charts. So I found that frustrating. I don't blame him. But somebody, some staff member should have made sure, in my opinion, that there were copies of that available to the public out in the hallway. Thank you.
Are there any? I will, I will mention that um all of the figures that I showed today in in this presentation are available um in the document itself that is available online. So if if anyone has uh any comments or questions regarding the the slides I presented today or they want more information, there's a lot more detail in those, in in the report itself.
Are there any further questions or comments from the audience? Yes, sir.
Bob Pullman for the record. This is a question that can't be answered today, but for you to to think about. In order to get to two twenty thirty, how do, how far back do you have to back off and start replacing septics? And also at the same time, having the capacity at the sewer plant to take on these new people. Think about it. It is, you can't wait until twenty-nine and all of a sudden you bingo.
Your point is well taken. Any further questions or comments from the audience? Anybody on Zoom, Marcia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marcia Johnson for the record. We do have one caller I'll check with. Caller, do you have public comment on item number three?
Comment, thank you. No comment, thank you.
Thank you. No further public comment at this time.
Any further questions from the board? Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Norajo, uh so in your study here, uh I'm wondering if the Pineview Estates area uh of our county is included as part of the Ruins drop area or 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 not?
I um, the Pineview. So the, I'm going to share my screen again uh just to. Did I lose you? Share my screen. You'll have to tell me approximately where that area is. But what I will say is that the the mod, the both models that we used in to estimate transport were were fundamentally uh um for the Ruins drop area encompassed this white boundary here.
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure that it extends far enough south to to pick up the Pineview Estates or not because it's hard to determine by that map. I'm, I'm feeling that it is not. But anyways, and I know that we have, or I understand we have a failing septic system, a community septic system in the Pineview Estates area that ultimately, I think, may contribute to the groundwater aquifer available in the Ruins Roth area, but I might be mistaken on that. But uh I know that or I understand that we're going to be running uh sewer down through uh from the Washi Shu uh casino uh down along ninety-five, uh three ninety-five uh through the Corley Ranch project and down into the Ruins Roth area to pick up eventually the Pineview Estates. I believe that's the whole purpose of that uh process. Would it be a recommendation or are you suggesting that perhaps it would be beneficial to the Ruins Roth uh community to also subsequently tie into that uh sewer line going down through their community since it's going to be in close proximity and try to get Ruins Roth as much as possible off of septic tanks? If we do that, by what I can gather in your presentation, that would uh allow the aquifer that the wells, the what is it, five hundred and eleven wells? I believe it was, yeah, five hundred and eleven wells uh might unto itself with recharge rates settle our or address our issues of nitrate plumes in that area. Would that be a fair assumption or not?
I can't, I can't speak to um the placement of particular areas under municipal or or, you know, piping sewers, septic or domestic um sewer out of out of neighborhoods. But what I'll say is, based on the models that we used, that is correct, that if you take the septic systems out of production or out of use, the and and you continue to have dome, I mean, there's two, there's two scenarios that we looked at. One, um you you're still using domestic wells to pump the aquifer and but you but you've taken the septic system out of the equation. So under that scenario, yes, you you'll have, you still may have drawdown issues regarding the the use of domestic wells. And and there's some issues with the Ruins drop, just as was pointed out earlier, a lack of recharge and and over time, there has been declining water levels in this area. So taking the septic systems out of the out of the equation, you're going to have less impacts of nitrates to the aquifer, but it may not it may not have that significant of an issue regarding the water level declines.
Now, uh thank you. The, it's my understanding that uh the deeper you go into a domestic well situation, the other issues that you might pick up are not necessarily the nitrates, but other heavy metals such as uh arsenic, right, thank you, Mr. Rice, arsenic, so so ju, and if we don't get a proper recharge through the pine nuts, because that's where that recharge of that aquifer comes from is the pine nuts, we don't get adequate water flow into that aquifer. And those uh domestic wells uh have to go deeper and deeper uh to to get water sufficient for our residents. Then they might run into the opposite problem of 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 picking up the other heavier metals, the arsenic and other other stuff that is contrary to their uh their health benefits. Is that correct also? So just just taking the nitrate or just taking the septic systems offline uh and and bringing them into a a sewer line is not necessarily the long term answer uh to the process either, right?
Not to the broader implication of long term water level declines. But it it will have an effect on the water quality, um at least on the shallow part of the aquifer. I will say that you you point out a very valid point that I didn't discuss in this presentation, but I have in other presentations as it pertains to arsenic. As I pointed out earlier in the in the conceptual model, the urea that's transported through the unsaturated zone uh is stored, the nitrate is stored right at the water table. And as you can imagine, as the water table is declining, those wells that might have had twenty feet of um distance between the well screen and the water table twenty years ago um in more current times, because water levels are declining, they um they may not have, they may not have had issues before, but they may not, they now have issues with nitrates as a result of the water table declines. So um from a broad perspective, there is, you know, the the integration of the physical nature of the aquifer is is entirely related to the aquifer qual, water quality. As someone pointed out earlier, the depth of the aquifer, how much water is there? Uh it's really how much water is is usable and and to what extent is, are you going to be willing to pay for 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 treatment of water for domestic or municipal use? Arsenic levels tend to be higher at greater depths. So those folks that are deepening their wells to avoid nitrate considerations in the the shallow or even water table declines may have to consider taking their sample, their well water for analysis of arsenic because of the of the uh the um the likelihood of the arsenic levels to be higher uh at deeper depths within the aquifer.
So um going back to January, I believe it was January, that we approved a a water quality study uh throughout countywide. I'm not sure exactly when that study is going to come back to this board. But we're going to be, if I'm not mistaken, it was a study that was designed to study not just the nitrates, but all all water quality regardless of the level in the aquifer. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, the study, um the USGS study that we're partaking in right now, we started in July and we we just recently had a stakeholder meeting regarding different aspects of the of the USGS study. We have one in particular that you mentioned that relates to arsenic and nitrate evaluation of trends of data. I keep getting a I'm sorry if my screen keeps shutting off. That study is ongoing. We we should have at least some preliminary discussion items to talk up to you guys about in the coming months, um as we summarize the more recent water quality data that we have for for nitrate and any available data that we can gather for arsenic. As it pertains to different pumping scenarios in the Carson Valley area, we are, we'll be working closely to try to get an understanding for the source water to those, to those municipal wells as we, as we look at different pumping scenarios and strategies.
Thank you very much for your answers.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rosette.
Well, thank you, Mr. Norajo, for giving us all the data that we really needed in here in the first place. I'm just looking at the one map of the two areas, Johnson Lane, Ruensroth, 1,433 septic tanks. They shouldn't be there in the first place. We should, the county needs to provide a way of getting that waste out of there. Secondly, the wells, 2,627 wells in Johnson Lane. Those people, those, those wells should be supplanted by a water supply. Now, having said that, that makes it, makes it real simple. We get rid of septic tanks, we put in sewers, we get rid of the wells, we put in water, direct water. But that's a large, large, large public works project, and it costs a lot of money. So, what we ought to be thinking about now is say, yep, we got to get rid of those things, but let's start looking at developing a plan to make that come about. It won't happen in 10 years, it won't happen in 20. I think I'll be dead before it happens. But I want it to happen, and I think for the people of the county that they deserve it to happen.
Any further questions from the board? Doctor, I have a... Commissioner Rice?
Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
I know at the lake, we have no septic systems. They did away with those a long time ago, and everybody is on sewers, and that sewage is all collected. It goes to the, the processing plant, there's other words for it, but the septic is turned into affluent. The nitrates removed, the water is cleansed to the point where according to, according to the scientists that we have engaged, it's almost as drinkable as some of the water in third world countries. It's so pure when it leaves the sewer authority. And then it's pumped over the hill and down into the valley where it is used by ranchers down here, and it recharges the aquifer. My question is, would it be possible in these areas such as in Ruensroth to take their affluent, treat it, and then bring it back and then pump it into the ground to recharge the aquifer?
That would be a question for the state engineer, but I think the, there are other cases in Washoe County where that is, is taking place, where water is secondary affluent, is put into recharge basins, and allowed to infiltrate and recover areas where water may be used for later purposes. Yeah, that is, that is something that it can be done, but whether, whether in this instance, you know, that would be a question for the state engineer or others responsible for permitting those types of, permitted those types of actions.
Thank you.
Doctor, would, would you elaborate on caffeine that you've analyzed to be in some of these systems?
Well, in our, in our investigation, we, you know, we didn't, we didn't sample for caffeine, but caffeine is a good tracer for, for many aquifers throughout the country. They've used it, they find caffeine in stream systems, they find it in aquifer systems and drinking water. There's a whole laundry list of chemicals, forever chemicals, that are finding themselves into our waterways and our drinking water that are coming from a number of different products. I think many of you have heard the term PFOS, and those are like nonstick chemical compounds that are used for pans or flame retardants in clothing. All those end up in our waterways and are, in many cases, there hasn't been a lot of investigation on those, the transport of those chemicals into areas such as, you know, Carson Valley, and to evaluate whether we're seeing other types of chemicals in our aquifer system. But you're correct, there's, caffeine is a common tracer, just like nitrates, which is typically attributed to affluent that are leaving either broken sewer lines or domestic septic systems.
So, apparently caffeine doesn't metabolize in nature. Is that as correct as, yeah? Now, good, septic tank maintenance. Could you just give us some basic guidelines, like a septic tank, should it be a minimum of one acre, whatever? Frequency of pumping, putting microbes in, anything that you have observed to make for good maintenance on a septic system? Thank you.
I will point out that the federal EPA has a lot of information on proper maintenance of septic systems. UNR used to have a co-op extension website dedicated for the purpose of educating the public on septic system maintenance. I think it's important to know that there is a lot of documentation out there from, from trusted sources that the public can get access to. Many folks don't even know whether they have a septic system or know what to do about it, but there's, there are some pretty good guidelines of what you can do to maintain it, not using solvents in your flushing solvents down the toilet, for example, would be one example that you'd want to prevent, or even, you know, maintaining the actual tank, which is a storage of all the solids that come out of your home. Many people don't know that they have to clean that aspect, clean the tank out, which is, you know, many cases, that's where a lot of the failures occur. But I would, I would point to some of the trusted federal sources or state sources of information available online for proper maintenance of septic systems.
Things like, don't use Clorox in the wash?
Well, you know, I think, you know, in terms of Clorox, that would be a tough one to know whether, you know, a single-use Clorox would have any effect on, on the microbial breakdown of urea, or, or even effectiveness of the bleach aid itself, or the bleach aid system. I would say, you know, dumping a whole gallon of Clorox would have a negative impact on it, but I don't, I don't know about single use, if you're doing laundry and that kind of stuff would have, by the time it gets to the bleach, it would probably get diluted down.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Doctor, thank you very much for the presentation. It's most informative and it's very thought-provoking, so, once again, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. We'll be seeing you again, I'm sure.
Okay.
That's right. Okay, we'll do item four. Jacques, are you here, or are you online? There he is, okay. And then we'll take a break after this.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Jacques Etchegoyen, and I'd first like to thank you for your time, and I think more importantly, thank you to your public service to a place we love. So, I am here to talk to you about the Northern Nevada Economic Development and Conservation Act of 2021. It was introduced by Mark Amade, known as HR 5243, introduced on September 14. And I'd like to give yourselves and some residents some historic context on, on how we got here in Douglas. And this is a stunning view of a forever protected ranch owned by the Esquaga family. Of course, we've lost John and Rose, but that 1,200 acres will stay a ranch, it will stay green, and it'll stay beautiful like that forever. And a side story, and then those of you that's especially relevant, and that land is, is beautiful, but the only thing more interesting than the beauty of that land are the stories that it can tell us of the people who came before. And before John bought that ranch years before, a gentleman by the name of Max Fleishman owned it, and that Max Fleishman of Fleishman Yeast. And he also owned a house at Glenbrook, and interestingly enough, he was deputized by the sheriff in Douglas County, quite a character to say the least, and left an amazing gift to Nevada and the Santa Barbara area. When he passed in 1950, he left $192 million to be spent on philanthropic endeavors in Nevada and the Santa Barbara region. That's three to four billion dollars in today's dollars. And it's fascinating, that money actually built the first Douglas County Public Library here in Mendon. Just fascinating, and many of the buildings at UNR and UNLV were built with his money and are named after he and his wife. But again, it's this sort of land that we want to protect and continue the program with, and it's amazing, it does, the program ties the water to the land, which is obviously important. And really, it was kind of a, of a thought of how do we further implement the Douglas County Master Plan that was adopted in 1996, and happened that year to get the National Planning Award for the best master plan in the United States, and also continue on with open space and agricultural lands protection. The transfer development rights has protected about 6,000 acres in Douglas County. It's, it's a really elegant system where a developer per rooftop is required to buy one TDR from a rancher, which effectively protects about one acre for each TDR. And another component of what got Douglas County interested in, in the plan to essentially have a land bill, is that years ago, about 20 years ago, the county entered into an agreement with the Bureau of Land Management, and it was a very effective agreement. Basically, between here and Carson City, up, right on the border between here and Carson City, with the BLM, we planned an area of 300 acres to be sold, auctioned, auctioned by the BLM, and all of those proceeds would be used to buy conservation easements in Douglas County. Well, lo and behold, a solicitor in Washington DC in the Department of Interior read the fine print of the enabling legislation and said, no, 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 you can't use that money except for in specially designated, congressionally designated areas. So, we had a fantastic sale. 300 acres, 20 years ago, generated $40 million. 98% of that money left Douglas County. And certainly, we did not want to see that happen again. So, we protected about 18,500 acres so far, just amazing success in the most expensive real estate market in, in Nevada, as far as the county goes. The BLM and the Forest Service has spent about $35 million. And what we want to do, again, this Douglas County land bill, part of a much larger now Department of Defense bill, which I think actually very much helps us because it's important, and that will be higher profile. And to talk about other successes, Nevada's first ranch, known as Ranch Number One, has been forever protected by a conservation easement, just as an example. And again, we're hoping to continue these efforts. You know, we all know Douglas County well, it is gorgeous, and I've always said it's the classiest county in Nevada. Certainly, our agricultural heritage is important, and for those of us who started off ranching here many years ago, almost all of us learned to drive a tractor of that, essentially that exact tractor. This is one of the protected ranches. Some of you may recognize the Skosa Ranch Barn. Again, it's just part of our rich agriculture and just the heritage of this area is, this is where Nevada began. We've had numerous public hearings. I meet with anybody who calls me about issues that may be affected by the land bill. There are folks concerned, the wild horse issues are obviously significant, and I do make myself available to, to reach out and meet with folks. One of the keystones of the land bill, and it's interesting, there's a 28-acre parcel situated literally between Best Buy and Target that's owned by the United States Forest Service. And you can see, it's hard to manage, it's a dumping ground, it's a very, very valuable piece of property, and in fact, we need a road to go behind it to take the, if there was ever an accident on 395, to have a way to go around in that situation for, for public safety. I've always said, the quality of life in Douglas County is measured by the number of cows per square mile. I think it still is. We'd like to keep more of that, and again, the goal of, of the sales of some of these lands would be 90% goes for conservation easements, and trails or trailheads of the County Commission thinks those are our priority. 10% goes to the county general fund, 5% goes to the state education fund. And that's a, obviously, a graphic that shows the flooding in 1997, spread out over at least 25,000 acres. Amazing, Reno had damage, they're probably well exceeded $85 billion. And one of the elegant things of the system you have here and that we have here is that when you do get a flood event like that, it spreads out, replenishes the aquifer, adds some new silt to ranches, makes the soil richer, and in a couple of weeks, you don't even know what happened on the ranchland. And so, it's, it's very efficient, very, it doesn't cost the taxpayers, and Reno is going to try and recreate a similar system. Of course, it won't work nearly as well, and they're going to spend nearly a billion dollars to kind of get back to what the Turkey Meadows used to be. And I think what we want to do is do that through the front door. Let's keep the ranches we've got. Again, it's part of our culture and heritage, and these are indicating some of the parcels, 7,500 acres, actually, it's about 7,700 acres, that would go into Douglas County ownership as a result of the land bill. And what's fascinating, going back to the Bureau of Land Management and what happens with the proceeds, all of this land is proposed to be auctioned by the BLM. It's on their disposal list, and they've actually added to it in the last few years. Without the land bill, that land will get auctioned, and there will probably be houses on it. It probably won't be, you know, your average Douglas County resident buying these parcels. And so, given the existing zoning, you have 7,700 acres, you could have hundreds and hundreds of houses out there that none of us want. And so, without the land bill, that land gets auctioned, the money goes to Washington DC, and we probably get some houses where none of us want houses. So, again, the land bill is about putting in place and continuing the effort of protecting places we want to see protected forever, and maybe there's places that, that there can be growth and certainly infill, like that 28 acres between Target and Best Buy. One of the interesting things that came out of this, just the discussion of even the county looking at doing the land bill is, I met with Jeff Marcellet, who at the time was running the Tahoe Forest at Lake Tahoe, National Forest, and part of the bill originally included language that directed... And part of the bill originally included language that directed the Tahoe Forest Service to do extended concessionaire leases with some of the properties they bought. This happens to be Round Hill Pines. The Forest Service bought it many decades ago for $12 million. And a lot of the buildings were falling down, and the Forest Service wasn't willing to give the concessionaire long enough time to improve the facility. And so it literally was falling down around everybody. And so what Jeff did was, he said, "You know, I'm going to do this before you pass the legislation because I think it's the right thing to do. We weren't going to get around to it, but because this legislation is in motion, we're going to get to it." And so Round Hill Pines has a new concessionaire, has invested many millions of dollars. It's an important part of that part of that region's economy as far as Lake Tahoe. They've built new structures, it's a world-class experience. They're busy, that's good for Douglas County. Again, they've invested deeply, and I think they'll invest more. And that is an outcome that was because the land bill was being considered, hadn't even been introduced in Congress at that point. Anyway, again, they're invested many millions of dollars, and it's a resoundingly good outcome even before the land bill was introduced. Part of a component of this bill, and this is it with Marcus Faust, who said, "You know, we've got to have some things in the bill to pass it nationally, and we've got to have a bipartisan effort," which we do. The last time this bill was introduced, it was introduced by Senator Cortez Masto and Rosen, and of course, Mark Amade supported it because we've tried to make it good for folks in Nevada that think this is important to do and can unite behind it. And it was interesting, too, when it was last introduced a year ago, there was an issue of, "Well, what do the friends in Nevada wilderness think about it?" So I contacted my friends there, I got a letter within an hour, and we sent it to Washington, and I can tell you, it resounded very, very well, just to put to bed issues of, "Is everybody really for this?" So we are going to have a very small wilderness area. We've carved out every road, every camping area, and what those are called in this business, they're cherry-stimmed. And people can still use those. And also, the Burbank Canyon Wilderness Study Area is exactly that because it's so steep and rugged, there are no roads that go through it or into it. This bill will also give us a seat at the table of the Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act, which Senator Bryan passed many years ago. We won't necessarily be able to get all the things we want, but we'll have a seat at the table, and we can argue for new parks, trails, and natural areas, especially along the corridors of rivers and creeks in Douglas County. And we may have access to some of that snipper money. Without this act, we have no seat at that table. So again, we're in Washington, the bill is in motion. I think Amade is very supportive, and we've got the Navy's component, which is very significant to the Department of Defense. They expect that that addition will add 1,000 employees in western Nevada. So there's a lot of things that our bill is now attached to that I think are important and give our bill more strength than it might have otherwise had. Congressman Amade could add more to that when you see him, but we have many landowners who'd like to participate, and I think what's happened is, the program's been very effective, and the ranchers do look over the fence and say, "You know, gosh, that guy's got four new tractors, a couple new pickups, spends every October in Hawaii, and still has a beautiful, beautiful ranch." And so they've looked over the fence and said, "Wow, I'm in." And the unfortunate thing is, the snipper program, especially for land acquisitions, we were very fortunate to get some on the list three or four years ago. It's basically running dry. I don't see them doing significant land acquisitions in the future. The most recent round in all of Nevada, with a fund that's generated $3 billion, they proposed to spend $300,000 in land acquisition. So we've kind of moved out of that area, that era, making the land bill for Douglas County that much more important. And I appreciate your time, and I certainly can answer any questions or do my darndest to answer.
Jacques, thank you. Initially, I'd like to bring it to the public, and if they have any questions, any questions from the audience?
Dan St. John again. I just wanted to congratulate Jacques for not losing his passion. He and I worked, or I worked with him when he led the effort to purchase over 600 acres by the federal government that was underutilized private land at Lake Tahoe, working with a then Senator of Nevada. So I could see you're still at it, doing great things. And as a landowner not far from the map that showed all the hatched areas, I would certainly urge the county commission to put their shoulder behind this one because I think nothing but good could happen to our county from this one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Slade?
Jim Slade. When invited, I always find something to speak, to say. Great job, Jacques. I applaud everything you're doing, and I, like Mr. St. John, urge the commission, I know you're all behind this anyhow, but you know, the more help you can give to our congressional delegation, the better. Some of you were not county residents when Mr. Etchegoyen sat up there on the dais where you now are, but he's been working tirelessly on this for many years. It's been frustrating how long it has taken to this point, frustrating to Jacques and to all of us, but it seems like we're making some progress, and I hope between you and Jacques and our congressional delegation, we could push this thing through because I think it has a lot of very positive effects in the future for Douglas County.
Any further questions or comments from the audience? Marcia, anybody on Zoom?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marcia Johnson, for the record, there's no public comment online at this time.
Bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Etchegoyen, you made brief mention of the United States Navy, of which I was a participant for many years. What is that? What's the Navy doing out in the desert?
You know, it's interesting, Commissioner. Some years ago, the Navy decided, and I think with the technology of creating oceans where there are none, they were able to move the Top Gun School to Fallon Naval Air Station. And I guess it's been a resounding success, and they want to expand their acreage. And there are some issues with that, which is some recreational groups don't want more roads closed, and so the Navy's going to have to work through some of those, but they are looking at a very significant expansion that appears by all measures to be good for western Nevada, certainly good for Fallon. And again, I think it is a powerful bill, and Douglas's bill starts on page 111 of that bill. And actually, my son's meeting with the Secretary of Navy tomorrow, and don't know that our bill will be at all a topic, but this is, it's a good issue, and it's, I think it's good that our wagons hitch to this issue.
Would agree with you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Also, it has one of the largest Navy junior ROTC programs in the nation out there. So they're certainly something to be proud of. Jacques, I share the sentiments of the individuals who came to the microphone to express their congratulations, actually, I guess, for your steadfast attention to trying to bring and keep Douglas County as rural as possible. So when I saw this presentation by you a couple of weeks ago at the Chamber of Commerce meeting, I was hopeful that you would be bringing it before this board, so I thank you for doing that. I also, I don't know what the timetable is on this program, but as you know, government works very, very quickly. I say that tongue-in-cheek. So I have no idea when this is going to come forward, but I can appreciate and applaud you for your persistence. I was, I had an opportunity to speak with Congressman Amade last month at the Republican Heritage Barbecue, and I encouraged him at that time to overlook the possibility of getting into the governor's race in this state because I think that we really need him in Washington DC, especially his seniority, and as we expect to perhaps pick up on the Republican side of the ticket there, more seats and that. And maybe we can push this forward a little bit faster, but I am glad to, I was very pleased when he announced this last Monday morning that he was going to remain in Congress. So anyways, once again, great presentation, and appreciate your continued efforts over the last, well, I mean, you spent 12 years up here, I believe.
A long time ago.
One of the few members of the board that gets to spend 12 up here. And I don't know that that was a blessing for you, but it was a blessing for the county, I'm sure. So anyways, thank you for your continued community service.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner Rice?
I've known Jacques for a few weeks now. I had the pleasure of meeting him in about '93, if I remember correctly. And I want to compliment you on what you have done for this county. Living at the lake in the lake. I can tell you that what they've done with Round Hill Pines is incredible, and there's more to come. The expansion of the availability of access and egress is going to be greatly enhanced by the plans of moving the entrance. That's in the words of TRPA as we speak. We've, have a neighbor that's not too happy about it, but I think that we can overcome some of those objections. There'll be a deceleration lane to get in there.
Very good.
As you know, that's probably one of the three most dangerous curves on Highway 50 going through the lake, so that's going to be addressed. And having been, I guessed at NAS Fallon a couple of times, in being able to watch them blow up stuff in Bravo 17, I believe is what it's called. It's an incredible facility out there, and I would anticipate that it will be expanded. And it was, Harry Reid was able to bring that to Nevada, and they moved it from San Diego. And they have a few housing projects down there, and I guess it was safer to bring those things in and out over desert than over housing developments. But it's quite the facility, and it's so sophisticated that I'll tell you, you have no idea what they have going out there. So thank you for what you're doing, and trust me, I believe that you have the support of the entire board, which is unusual. But anyway, thank you.
Any further questions or comments from the board? Jacques, I'd like to ask you a question.
You bet.
The ranchland here and the grass-fed cattle seems to be an extraordinary valuable asset for ranchers. Would you care to elaborate on that?
Well, you know, I was, basically grew up on the Mack Ranch, the 500 acres south of Mendon, and so I have to caveat that I find myself a recovering rancher, so I'm very prejudiced. But I do think that when you watch the quality of livestock in Douglas County and Carson Valley, and they convert that beautiful green grass into super high-quality protein, it's an elegant system, it's efficient, and by irrigating this ranchland, you add a little to the topsoil every year with, you know, most ranchers I know use about 48 inches of water a year, replenishes our groundwater. The whole system is just sustainable for 1,000 years into the future. And I always had a Professor Davis always said, "Well, you know, asphalt's the last crop," and I could not agree more. And so what we have here is unique, I think it's worth conserving, and I think we all know Douglas County is unique in Nevada, and we want to keep it that way. And so I want to see those ranchers, and I probably shouldn't say this, but for me, I found nothing more gratifying than to hand a rancher a nice check and say, "And just keep ranching." And we're going to take the movement of water downriver, and there has been about 2,500 acre-feet of water bought by entities not in Douglas County, it's been transferred. They're knocking on doors again, and so that's the purpose behind a program such as this Douglas County land bill is, let's do conservation easements, tie the water to the land, and remove the development potential in perpetuity. That was a long-winded answer to your question, Mr. Chairman.
Well, it's very informative, and it's kind of been my observation that these people back in Washington DC, I think we're all a bunch of rubes out here in the West and still robbing stagecoaches. I don't know. They got a valuable asset out here. That's right.
Good work, Jacques.
Thank you. It's a pleasure. It's an honor working for you.
Are there any further questions? Amy? All right. Jacques, thank you so much. It was most informative. It always is when you, when you visit and talk about what you're doing. It's just remarkable, and anything that we can do to support your efforts, please, don't, well, I know you won't hesitate to contact us, so we're with you. On that, let's see, let's take a 15, 20-minute break. It is now, let's be back here about, yeah, 3:35. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.
All right. So we call this our GIF model, growth and inflation beats the Federal Reserve policy, which drives interest rates. And so looking at the last few quarters, then forecasted ahead, we look at GDP from growth, gross domestic product. It's increasing since last year. We peaked most likely in the second quarter of this year in that light blue with the red cap on it, 6.7% and forecasted to go down. The third quarter that we just finished was forecasted when we started the quarter in July at 7%. And in fact, I had to send this to the treasurer a couple of weeks ago. We actually got the number for the first read of the third quarter and it was only 2%. Delta variant and some other things were challenging for the quarter. We can see that light blue line is projected to get up about 5% this quarter. But the Bloomberg forecast has it going down next year. And we think that's probably a pretty accurate forecast for GDP. Now inflation has really been the interesting story. We see the dark blue line represented by consumer price index CPI increasing. And most likely is that the quarter we're in right now probably will peak. And then the forecast has it going down to more of a normal range of two and a half percent. The Federal Reserve thinks it will be transitory. Our chief economist and others think that it's going to be a little bit higher due to the lag in feeding through housing prices, wage increases, supply chain challenges. So certainly something the Fed is really watching. They had their meeting yesterday. They talked a lot about inflation. The next page, and whenever I can include Sesame Street on a slide deck, it just, it brings it up a notch. So one of these things is not like the others. We remember that fun song. So we look at the long-term correlation between interest rates, the orange is the 10-year treasury rate and the blue CPI. Those huge inflation numbers that we had and interest rates in the late seventies, early eighties, the Federal Reserve raised the, the Fed funds and the prime rate to over 20% to really clamp down that. And we've had this 40-year decline in interest rates and inflation. And we've had some spikes here and there. And you see at the end, the CPI is quite a bit higher than interest rates in that correlation right now. So definitely unlike the other times that we've had. The Federal Reserve really watches future inflation expectations and that's what this is measuring. The, the orange line is looking at the average inflation per year for the next five years. And then the blue is the next two years. The Federal Reserve has a target rate around 2% average inflation. And you see over this last decade, the longest economic expansion before COVID in the US history, we actually averaged less than 2% inflation. And then we've had this big spike up recently with a lot of federal stimulus and spending and supply chain challenges pushing inflation higher. But it's not off the charts higher. It's not expected to be 5 or 6% prolonged and so more of that 2 to 3% range. The Federal Reserve has two mandates. One is stable inflation around that 2% target. The other is full employment. They target around 5% unemployment, 4 to 5% unemployment. Now, if they were just looking at inflation, they would be raising interest rates right now. But what I've done on this graph, and maybe a little small for the audience, but each of those lines, the months at the bottom, that's how long it took to get all the jobs back that were lost during the various recessions we've had. So the Great Recession, it took 77 months to get all the jobs back. And the left-hand side, that's the scale percent of jobs we lost. We lost about 6.7% of our jobs during the Great Recession. We see the COVID recession, such a unique and different time, of course, with the economy being shut down many sectors. We lost about 15% of the jobs. Nevada was the hardest hit. And so we're climbing back. We still have about 5 million jobs to get back. And so that's the main reason why the Federal Reserve has not raised interest rates. My little inside graph there is just the monthly jobs change. Last summer, we were generating about 1.7 million jobs and then we slowed down, actually went negative in December when the economy had some restrictions going on. And then we went up quite a bit this last summer where we had two months in a row that averaged over a million jobs, but the last two months have been quite disappointing. Again, a lot to do with the, the Delta variant. We should have an increase. We get the jobs report tomorrow, it's the first Friday of the month. Usually we should have a nice rebound. But that's been the challenge of the Fed to raise rates, just the unemployment, the job market has been challenging. And you hear there's tons of job openings. And so it's this weird thing going on at employers trying to hire increasing wages. And so unemployment benefits were been a big factor. Those have mainly been discontinued. So we're getting some good signs of people getting back in the job market, but it's just going to take a while. This is looking at the federal funds rate, which really ties to the investment portfolio for the county. And for those in the audience who might know, we only have, we can only invest per state law with fixed income in the bond market. We're not in the stock market and it's a short-term, really highly rated instruments there. So what the Federal Reserve does really drives the return of the portfolio. So going back when I started my career in the late eighties, early nineties, we see we were around 8%. We had a lot higher inflation back then. And we just, we've had lower lows this whole 30-plus year period here. And so usually the federal funds rate is not static for long. You see during the Great Recession, it was at near zero for seven years. And then we increased and then we've been at near zero for the last two, two and a half years, projected to go up to about one and a half, 2%. But again, just lower highs in interest rates over this cycle. Here's looking at the Federal Reserve's balance sheet. Prior to the Great Recession, it was just a nice steady increase. Banks have to keep about 10% of their deposits on reserve at the Fed just to help with bank runs. The Federal Reserve was created in the 1913, in 1913, just to help solidify the banking industry with this challenge back then. And then the Great Recession, we had hit, and the Federal Reserve started this program called quantitative easing, where they were buying bonds out into the market treasuries and federal agency bonds to help fund the stimulus that we've had during that time and then certainly during the COVID recession as well. And so it's expected that they're going to slow their pawn purchases. They announced that yesterday. They're planning to do that over the next six to eight months. And so Politico had an article about this the other day, saying trying to push another big spending package before the next election is tempting, but most know it will be a heavy lift. And I think the Virginia governor's race this week, the outcome there even solidifies that probability of not much, not as much spending going forward as President Biden's administration would like. We have more moderate senators on the Democratic side, Senator Manchin, Senator Semina, Semina, I'm not saying that right. Thank you, from Arizona. Thinking of cinnamon there. So anyway, so they have really pushed back because they, they feel that a lot of the spending has caused inflation. And so I think that will temper and allow the Fed not to have to buy as much bonds because we won't have as much stimulus going forward. This is looking at interest rates, the 10-year, 5-year, 2-year and the three-month treasuries. And then the Fed funds rate, this goes back to 2018. The Federal Reserve was hiking rates back in 2018, the economy was recovering. But then you see market rates, those colored lines at the top, they
Okay, we'll bring the meeting back to order. All right, this is for presentation only. The annual presentation and discussion on the Douglas County Investment Program and Economic Market Update by F T N Financial Main Street Advisors, Douglas County's Investment Advisors. Mr. Phillips and Ms.
Kaiser.
Tiger, yeah. Let me warn you. We have an attorney with the D A who used to be with the S E C. You have the floor. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board. It's great to be with you. Rick Phillips, President of F H N Main Street. We're overseen by the S E C, so they don't scare us. I always like to review, look at the football aspects. And I know there's some new members of the Board, and so just an introduction about us. We're based in Las Vegas. We, investment advisory firm, only deal with states and local governments. And I started my career in public funds management with the city of Las Vegas thirty-two years ago. Worked there for about eight years and then moved over to Clark County for about another eight years. And about sixteen years ago, we started our firm. We're honored to be the county's investment advisor since two thousand seventeen. And like you mentioned, I'll give a brief economic and market update and then some highlights of the portfolio. Share the screen. There we go. So we call this our G I F model, growth and inflation beats the Federal Reserve policy, which drives interest rates. And so looking at the last few quarters, then forecasted ahead, we look at G D P from growth, gross domestic product. It's increasing since last year. We peaked most likely in the second quarter of this year, in that light blue with the red cap on it, six point seven percent. And forecasted to go down. The third quarter that we just finished was forecasted when we started the quarter in July at seven percent. And in fact, I had to send this to the Treasurer a couple of weeks ago. We actually got the number for the first read of the third quarter, and it was only two percent. Delta variant and some other things were challenging for the quarter. We can see that light blue line is projected to get up about five percent this quarter. But the Bloomberg forecast has it going down next year, and we think that's probably a pretty accurate forecast for G D P. Now inflation has really been the interesting story. We see the dark blue line represented by Consumer Price Index, C P I, increasing. And most likely is that the quarter we're in right now probably will peak. And then the forecast has it going down to more of a normal range of two and a half percent. The Federal Reserve thinks it will be transitory. Our chief economist and others think that it's going to be a little bit higher due to the lag in feeding through housing prices, wage increases, supply chain challenges. So certainly something the Fed is really watching. They had their meeting yesterday. They talked a lot about inflation. The next page, and whenever I can include Sesame Street on a slide deck, it just, it brings it up a notch. So one of these things is not like the others. We remember that fun song. So we look at the long-term correlation between interest rates, the orange is the ten-year Treasury rate, and the blue, C P I. Those huge inflation numbers that we had and interest rates in the late seventies, early eighties. The Federal Reserve raised the Fed funds and the prime rate to over twenty percent to really clamp down that. And we've had this forty-year decline in interest rates and inflation. And we've had some spikes here and there, and you see at the end, the C P I is quite a bit higher than interest rates in that correlation right now. So definitely unlike the other times that we've had. The Federal Reserve really watches future inflation expectations, and that's what this is measuring. The, the orange line is looking at the average inflation per year for the next five years, and then the blue is the next two years. The Federal Reserve has a target rate around two percent average inflation. And you see over this last decade, the longest economic expansion before COVID in U.S. history, we actually averaged less than two percent inflation. And then we've had this big spike up recently with a lot of federal stimulus and spending and supply chain challenges pushing inflation higher. But it's not off the charts higher. It's not expected to be five or six percent prolonged, and so more of that two to three percent range. The Federal Reserve has two mandates. One is stable inflation around that two percent target. The other is full employment. They target around five percent unemployment, four to five percent unemployment. Now, if they were just looking at inflation, they would be raising interest rates right now. But what I've done on this graph, and maybe a little small for the audience, but each of those lines, the months at the bottom, that's how long it took to get all the jobs back that were lost during the various recessions we've had. So the Great Recession, it took seventy-seven months to get all the jobs back. And the left-hand side, that's the scale percent of jobs we lost. We lost about six point seven percent of our jobs during the Great Recession. We see the COVID recession, such a unique and different time, of course, with the economy being shut down in many sectors. We lost about fifteen percent of the jobs. Nevada was the hardest hit. And so we're climbing back. We still have about five million jobs to get back. And so that's the main reason why the Federal Reserve has not raised interest rates. My little inside graph there is just the monthly jobs change. Last summer, we were generating about one point seven million jobs, and then we slowed down, actually went negative in December, when the economy had some restrictions going on. And then we went up quite a bit this last summer, where we had two months in a row that averaged over a million jobs. But the last two months have been quite disappointing. Again, a lot to do with the, the delta variant. We should have an increase. We get the jobs report tomorrow, it's the first Friday of the month, usually. We should have a nice rebound. But that's been the challenge of the Fed to raise rates, just the unemployment, the job market has been challenging. And you hear there's tons of job openings. And so it's this weird thing going on, employers trying to hire increasing wages. And so unemployment benefits were a big factor. Those have mainly been discontinued. So we're getting some good signs of people getting back in the job market, but it's just going to take a while. This is looking at the federal funds rate, which really ties to the investment portfolio for the county. And for those in the audience who might know, we only have, we can only invest per state law with fixed income in the bond market. We're not in the stock market, and it's a short-term, really highly rated instruments there. So what the Federal Reserve does really drives the return of the portfolio. So going back when I started my career in the late eighties, early nineties, we see we were around eight percent. We had a lot higher inflation back then. And we just, we've had lower lows this whole thirty-plus-year period here. And so usually the federal funds rate is not static for long. You see during the Great Recession, it was at near zero for seven years. And then we increased, and then we've been at near zero for the last two, two and a half years. Projected to go up to about one and a half, two percent, but again, just lower highs in interest rates over this cycle. Here's looking at the Federal Reserve's balance sheet. Prior to the Great Recession, it was just a nice steady increase. Banks have to keep about ten percent of their deposits on reserve at the Fed just to help with bank runs. The Federal Reserve was created in nineteen, in nineteen thirteen, just to help solidify the banking industry with this challenge back then. And then the Great Recession, we had hit, and the Federal Reserve started this program called quantitative easing, where they were buying bonds out into the market treasuries and federal agency bonds to help fund the stimulus that we've had during that time, and then certainly during the COVID recession as well. And so it's expected that they're going to slow their pawn purchases. They announced that yesterday. They're planning to do that over the next six to eight months. And so Politico had an article about this the other day, saying trying to push another big spending package before the next election is tempting, but most know it will be a heavy lift. And I think the Virginia governor's race this week, the outcome there even solidifies that probability of not much, not as much spending going forward as President Biden's administration would like. We have more moderate senators on the Democratic side, Senator Manchin, Senator Semina, Semina. I'm not saying that right. Yeah, thank you, from Arizona. Thinking of cinnamon there, so anyway. So they have really pushed back because they, they feel that a lot of the spending has caused inflation. And so I think that will temper and allow the Fed not to have to buy as much bonds because we won't have as much stimulus going forward. This is looking at interest rates, the ten-year, five-year, two-year, and the three-month treasuries, and then the Fed funds rate. This goes back to two thousand eighteen. The Federal Reserve was hiking rates back in two thousand eighteen. The economy was recovering. But then you see market rates, those colored lines at the top, they started to come down because the market participants were looking at the economy slowing. And in fact, the Federal Reserve cut rates three times in two thousand nineteen, even before COVID. And then, of course, pushed rates down to zero, pretty much near COVID. You see that zero line, that bottom three-month Treasury bill, kind of the purple, it actually went negative. She would, you would buy a Treasury bill and you would lose money. People are so worried about what was going on a year and a half ago that they were willing to buy short-term treasuries and actually lose money on them for a few months. So thankful that's, that's gone back up. We had the election results with the Democrats controlling everything in the fall, and then that solidified with the Georgia runoff in January. And so interest rates went up with the thought of more spending. And then that's again moderated with kind of the back down of what we've been seeing the moderates lately. But we're glad to see interest rates higher from an investment hat perspective. That helps the portfolio earn more. From a borrowing perspective, it's been great for people to refinance homes in the county if you need to borrow funds. It's been a good time to borrow, but more challenging on the investment side. Another thing that has pushed interest rates lower globally in the United States. We see we have the highest in these developed countries that I put up there. This is the five-year Treasury rate around the globe. And I drew the line there at zero. Japan and Germany, many countries in Europe have negative interest rates to try to stimulate their economies. The Federal Reserve said that that's really challenging for the banking industry to have negative interest rates. So they haven't been wanting to do that in the U.S., so thankfully they haven't. We're glad that Douglas County is not located in Germany or someplace, and that would have been a challenging time to invest in negative interest rates. But we see that trend headed higher, probably not substantially higher. We're still much lower than we were a few years ago, even with inflation higher right now than it was a few years ago. And then lastly, from the market side, this is consumer sentiment. And go back, the shaded areas of recessions, we see the dot-com recession, the Great Recession pushing things down. And we're actually lower right now from a consumer sentiment, looking for what consumers are feeling, even though we've had increases in consolidated sales tax in the state and the county, as well as property tax increases that have helped with the revenue for the county. Consumers are looking at higher inflation. It's challenging to buy a car with chip shortages and other things like that going on. But consumers have a lot of money saved up from stimulus, so hopefully they'll continue to spend and drive the economy. And that consumer sentiment will improve a little bit in the future. All right, let me highlight the portfolio. Now, that's maybe a touch challenging to see, but just that we're well diversified. On the top left, federal agencies and treasuries and the state's local government investment pool, which is liquidity pool, make up the bulk of the portfolio. The middle bars, we ladder the portfolio, zero to one year out to five-plus years. Always that zero to one year is going to be higher because that provides liquidity to pay the county's bills. We're making sure that that is sufficient to match when those liabilities come up. The middle chart in the, in the bottom, that's just the interest rate on the portfolio. It's about one point four percent right now. Seems really low, but just again, interest rates, just that low interest rate environment that we're in. But it does produce over a million dollars a year for the county from an investment income. And there's really no other place where you can generate revenue at state and local government levels without charging taxes. So the investment pool is a nice driver to provide services for citizens in the county. In the top, sorry, bottom left, you see the market value versus book value. There's an unrealized gain on the portfolio. That's just because bonds and interest rates are inversely related, their prices. So when interest rates go down, bond prices go up. So we bought bonds a few years ago when rates were higher, and that's why those unrealized gains are on the portfolio. Here's looking at the investment pool balance from when we started back in two thousand seventeen. It's seventy million, and it's gone up to over a hundred million. You see that dip that we had last year, that's COVID, revenue was down. So the portfolio was down just to provide liquidity. But with the economy rebounding and doing well in Douglas County and the state, it's rebounded up to an all-time high on the portfolio balance. This looks at the weighted average maturity. We, we've done a lot of analysis. The, the sweet spot is have about a two-year weighted average maturity. The portfolio is having sufficient liquidity, but the longer we can invest, the higher yield we usually make. And so that's how we've structured the portfolio that way. And then the bottom is just to compare the portfolio's yield with a market benchmark of the zero to five Treasury. It's really a good representation of what we can invest in for the county. And with that, love to entertain any questions.
This isn't open for public comment, but anybody from the public care to comment on anything?
Jerry Turner. I never hear anything about the fractional banking part of the banking. How does that affect inflation? That's my question. I never hear anything mentioned about it.
So the main drivers of inflation, just supply and demand instruments, supply and demand metrics out there in the economy. And so right now, we have a lot of money in consumer deposits in the banking system and not as many goods due to supply chain challenges. And so that's been one of the main drivers of inflation.
Commissioner Tarkanian?
I don't know if you're done with public comment. Very simple question. We have a hundred and two million dollars you're investing of the counties?
That's what's sitting in the county investment pool.
Wow. Mr. Chairman, is it, who determines the amount of money we want to have in reserve? Who determines the amount of money that the county needs in, in reserve?
Sorry, I couldn't get my microphone to work. It's a collaboration between the CFO and myself.
Commissioner Gardner, you got any questions about your I R A you want to? Okay. This is just a sidebar. And I think that all of our inflation is created by Congress spending money like confetti. There's three of us on this board that might be old enough to remember when a dollar bill had silver certificate on it. Are you old enough to remember that one?
I've studied it, Chairman.
Okay. Doesn't say that anymore. Well, this is very, all very interesting and affects all our lives. And of course, the investments in, in our county. And we appreciate your economic astuteness in regard to trying to read the tea leaves about what's going to happen economically in the future. And it's been pretty difficult as of late. So taking a conservative approach is probably best to do. And it's, the county's been okay since you guys have been managing it. So thank you for the presentation. Very interesting.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Well, she'll be back. Okay, we're going to item number six for possible action. Discussion on the proposed amendment updating Douglas County Policy three zero zero point two-three, investment policy, including possible modifications to the types of authorized and permitted investments Douglas County may participate in, as well as clarifying the responsibilities and review of the policies. Ms. Burins, you have the floor.
I will yield to Ms. Kaiser. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Kathy Kaiser, for the record, Assistant Treasurer. Each year, the good folks at F H N Financial do review the county's investment policy and recommend any changes if applicable. It was recommended this year that we incorporate one change to the investment policy that I'm bringing forward to you today for your consideration. We would like to change the max allowable for super national securities. Currently, it's at five percent. We would like to change that to fifteen percent as outlined under Section H of the Investment Policy Number fourteen, as a means to diversify the portfolio over time. Super national securities are securities that are issued or backed by the International Bank for Reconstruction and Development, the International Finance Corporation, or the Inter-American Development Bank. Each of these entities were established by Congress either in the nineteen forties or the nineteen fifties, with the U.S. being the largest shareholder. Each entity also does have a triple A rating from Standards and Poor's and Moody's compared to agency bonds or Treasury bonds, which have a double A rating. A few years back, the Nevada legislation also approved up to fifteen percent of the portfolio's allocation in super nationals as stated in N R S three fifty-five point one seven zero. And besides that, we have also incorporated just one minor, minor change in the review process of the investment policy is to just include not only the Clerk Treasurer to review it every two years or as needed, but also I R C review, which is the Internal Review Committee. So with that, thank you for your time, and if there's any questions.
D A Ritchie? You're the S E C guy. What do you think?
It's allowed by statute.
I don't know, this state legislature, I don't know about them sometimes. This is open for public comment. Is there any questions from the audience? Anybody online? Marsha?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. There's no public comment online at this time.
Okay, seeing no further public comment, we'll bring it back to the Board. Any questions or comments?
I have one, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Rice?
This is for Ms. Burgess, Bergens. I always miss that. Nothing personal. Can I assume that you and Ms. Willoughby are on the same page with this?
Yes, this has been sent out to all of the directors across the county to review, and we did not get any feedback from it. So she was included in that.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the Board? You weren't going to put this money into Bitcoins or cryptocurrency or any of that.
Thankfully, Chair, that the N R S does not allow that. It's very restrictive because this is safe money. With Commissioner Gardner's I R A, he can do that.
Seriously, though, you're going to, how is this mix or how are you going to be diversified with this change?
So we can only go up to fifteen percent per state statute. And the federal agencies, Fannie Mae, Federal Home Loan Bank, they have really diminished their issuance of bonds because there's so much cash out into the system. Banks are the ones that get that financing from the federal agencies. So these securities are very similar from a yield standpoint to federal agencies, but just allows us to diversify. And there's the three, so we'd probably do about five, four to five percent in each to get, and keep below that limit. But that would just allow us to get a little more yield on the portfolio. And as Kathy mentioned, they are triple A rated, higher rated than treasuries, because they do actually have a perceived better balance sheet than the federal government, although Uncle Sam can print money, we know that. But yet, that would just help us in diversification yield. So we'll definitely stay under the fifteen percent per compliance issues, probably be between ten and twelve percent over time.
Thank you, and this is an action item. And the only advice I can offer the Board, an old financial gnome once told me, you pays your money and you take your chances. So would somebody care to bring a motion forward?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the amendments to Policy three zero zero point two-three, the investment policy as presented.
I'll second it. We have a motion by Commissioner Rice, a second by Commissioner Tarkanian. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll all be watching this. This is item number seven. It's for presentation only. Introduction of Ordinance two zero two one dash one five A three, a zoning map amendment from L I Light Industrial to G I General Industrial to allow a twenty-six thousand two hundred square foot industrial recycling facility located approximately two hundred fifty feet southwest of the intersection of Airport Road and Hayborn Road within the airport community plan. The subject parcel is approximately nine acres in size. The property owner is S J R L L C A P N one three two zero dash zero eight dash four zero one dash zero zero four, development application D P twenty-one dash zero two two one, first reading. Oh, Sam, you got the floor?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Sam Booth here today for community development. As the Chairman just read, the title of the item, on this item today, we're just discussing introduction of the ordinance at this time. N R S two forty-one hundred allows and requires that the ordinance only be read by title and introduced here today to put the public on notice. I did hear some comments under the introductory comments this morning, or earlier this afternoon, just about why the process is done this way. If Mr. Ritchie wants to correct me if I'm wrong. The process is in accordance, again, with N R S two forty-four one hundred. I did bring a copy of that, just to recap, a portion of that section of N R S. But it says that all ordinances, when first proposed, must be read by title to the Board, immediately after which at least one copy of the proposed ordinance must be filed with the county clerk for public examination. Notice of the filing, together with the title, and an adequate summary of the ordinance and the date on which the, on which a public hearing will be held, must be published once in a newspaper in the county. And so that's exactly how this process works. We read the title into the record today at the first reading. We have attached in the packet a copy of the draft ordinance. And then the Clerk's office will post an ad in the newspaper notifying that the presentation in second reading will be at your December meeting. And that's when we'll, we'll have our discussion and presentation. Just to recap this item briefly, and this is in the background of the item in your packet on page three forty-one. The property owner is S J R L L C, and the applicant intends to develop a materials recycling facility on nine acres there at the intersection of Airport Road and Hayborn Road, again, as the Chairman read. Recycling facilities like this is only allowed in the general industrial zoning district. And the zoning today is light industrial, so it requires the rezoning. And that's why the ordinance is being introduced. The Planning Commission heard this item at their October twelfth regular hearing, and they recommended approval of the request by a five-zero vote. We did have two Commissioners, Bryce Klutz and Mark Neddenrip, that were absent that day. But it was a five-o vote of approval of the zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission also approved a special use permit that day. And so Title twenty, the Development Code, requires for this type of use. Not only do they have to have the approval of the general industrial zoning district, they also have a special use permit that's required by the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission approved that special use permit. That, I believe, was a vote of four to one, and Member Nick Meyer voted against the approval of the special use permit. And the, the special use permit is use permit, the Planning Commission has the final say on that permit, so that will not come forward to the board. However, it's conditioned that if the board were to deny the zoning, of course, the special use permit would be null and void because the zoning won't be in place for that. So again, just to recap, this is introduction today, and if it's introduced today, the second reading and public hearing for possible action will occur at your December 2 board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. We already had some public comments on this, so I think we know enough. All right, we'll go on to the next item.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Mr. Booth, one of the criticisms that we heard today regarding this project, well, we heard several criticisms, but one of them that struck a chord with me is that neither the airport nor any of the property owners in the neighborhood, nor any residential neighbors have been contacted regarding this. Is that correct?
In my estimation, Commissioner Rice, that's incorrect. And I did bring, just for my reference at least, but if the board would like copies, I could make copies for the board. In the packet presented to the Planning Commission, we had our noticing radius map required by Title 20. The Community Development Department has to require the applicant, and we actually send those notices out, but send notices out to properties surrounding the subject property. It depends on the size and acreage of the property, how large that noticing radius is, and that's dictated in Title 20 and code. So for a nine acre site, the noticing radius is 650 feet. So all properties within 650 feet were mailed a notice regarding the application. I think, you know, maybe a discrepancy there is that the Meridian Business Park is just to the west of the site. In the Meridian Business Park, the owners of the property would have been notified by mail. The tenants of the property, you know, if you're walking door to door, many of those are rented spaces, so they may not have been put on notice if the owner of the property didn't tell them. In addition to the direct mailings that staff does, there's a sign on the property that's posted as well, as well as notice in the newspaper. And the notice in the newspaper, the sign, and the mailings are all required 10 days prior to the Planning Commission's hearing. So that was all about October 1, when all of those notices went out.
Thank you. Sam, do you have anything to add? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Booth. We appreciate the information. And we'll move on to item number eight for possible action. Discussion on a tentative commercial subdivision map to subdivide a 6.73 acre parcel into 20 parcels, the smallest being 10 acres and the largest being 3.65 acres. The project site is located at the northern corner of Buckeye Road and Mueller Parkway in the Light Industrial Zoning District in the Menden Community Plan. The applicant is Bruce Scott, Resource Concepts, representing the owner, David Park, Park Ranch Holdings LLC, APN 1320-28-000-043, Land Division Application DP 21-0225.
Mr. Chair, before we go any further, I believe you said 10 acres, and it should be .1 acres.
Point 10 acres.
I want to make sure that that's in the record correctly.
Yes, .10 acres. The largest is 3 points, it's 6 acres. Okay. Lucille, are you going to present?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Lucille Rayo, Community Development. We'll start with the vicinity map. The parcel is located on Buckeye Road, south of Mueller Parkway. It's in the Light Industrial Zoning District, and it's in the industrial land use. The proposed project design is for a 20 lot individually zoned subdivision. They're proposing lots in sizes from .10 acres to 3.65 acres. The proposed subdivision is intended to serve a storage facility in the future with individual ownership of the parcels. The commercial subdivision map is basically controlled by state law in terms of the size of the parcels that can be created, as well as the fact that they could create one parcel. They are showing you, as you'll see further on in the PowerPoint, they are providing the parcels and the layout of the buildings with the map. So you'll get to see that. If they wanted to create just the one parcel, and that would be, the subdivision map would just have a boundary around it, they could do that and create the individual parcels through records of survey, and that's what state law allows them to do. So that's why some of the NRS sections are in here for you. On October 12, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed tentative subdivision map, and they voted five IAs, zero As, and two were absent to the Board of Commissioners. So this is, beginning on packet page 369, these are the layout of the parcels. So this is the parcel as it is today. Like I said, if they wanted to just do a commercial subdivision map without individual parcels, they could, and it obviously would just be the way the parcel is today with the boundary line around it. Here's what they are proposing, the 20 lots. So it's 19 parcels, so to speak, and one common area parcel. They are going to have an HOA. That's what they're proposing in the future. And the final map in this series has the improvements on it. It also went before Water Conveyance Advisory Committee on October 4. There was, there was basically not many conditions, but any conditions that were placed on it are on packet page 353, and that's Condition A1G. And basically, it's a standard condition that we put in most of our application, most of our staff reports, where any conditions that were placed on the project would have to be met. Findings have been met. Findings, responses to the findings, staff's responses to the findings are on packet pages 351 to 352, if you want to refer to those. I'm sorry, what happened there? Can you hit the... There you go. Thank you. Okay. All right, so those were the findings. And in conclusion, based on the ability to make the findings, the recommendation of the Planning Commission is subject to the recommended conditions of approval. Staff recommends approval of Land Division Application DP 210225, a tentative commercial subdivision map to subdivide a 6.73 acre parcel into 20 parcels ranging in size from .10 acres to 3.65 acres. And the next slide has a recommendation if you choose to approve the map. I'm available for any questions, as well as the county engineer, Jeremy Hutchings, to my left.
Okay. This is open for public comment. Is there any questions or comments from... Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Bruce Scott, representing the project today. For your information, Mike Gilbert is working with us and with Mr. Park on this project. I am happy to answer any questions you may have, but I have nothing to add to the staff's presentation at this point.
Any further questions or comments from the audience? Marsha, anybody on Zoom?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson. For the record, there's no public comment currently on Zoom.
All right, no further public comment. And any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Rice?
As luck would have it, I consider Mike Gilbert to be a friend of mine. I have known him for a good number of years. I have worked for his brother for a good number of years. He was our constable. And, but my, my relationship with him would have no bearing on my decision on this matter.
Any further questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had one quick comment, and I noticed in this package that this did go before the Water Conveyance Advisory Committee. I know that sometimes certain advisory committees of ours feel like they're overlooked at times, and things are not run through them and asked for their opinion. So I was pleased to see this. And so I just wanted to make that comment that I'm glad that they did see this and concur on this. So thank you.
Any further questions, comments? I have a couple of questions. These parcels, once it's subdivided, these parcels will be individually owned. Is that correct?
That is what is being proposed, correct.
And what will be the intent ultimately with these parcel owners?
Mr. Chairman, Bruce Scott, the intent is to sell to people who are looking for upscale motorhome, trailer, or other storage for their RVs.
So this isn't for any type of industrial facilities or residential facilities?
Not at all. We've been through that with staff. We understand the concerns that the county's had with the use of some of, some of this type of development. And Mr. Gilbert is not looking in that direction at all. There will be no onsite residents. There will be, it'll be fenced and gated and secured, and it will be the subject of CCNRs that prohibit manufacturing and the kinds of concerns that have occurred and caused problems for enforcement in other parts of the valley.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, comments from the board? Seeing none? This is an action item. Somebody want to bring a motion forward? Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you. I move that we approve the tentative commercial subdivision map to subdivide a 6.73 acre parcel into 20 parcels, the smallest being .10 acres and the largest being 3.65 acres. The project site is located at the northeast corner of Buckeye Road and Mueller Parkway in the Light Industrial Zoning District in the Menden Community Plan.
I'll second that. We have a motion by Commissioner Gardner, a second by Commissioner Rice. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much.
One item, based on listening to your concerns over water earlier today, I've worked with the town of Menden on water rights for many years, and we have a well monitoring network in the valley where the Menden wells are located and outside of that area. And through the county manager, I would like to provide some data to show you what we have seen with regard to water levels in the immediate vicinity of the Menden wells and the Menden water system. I think that might be helpful to your considerations, knowing how sensitive water is. So I'll provide that to the manager's office because I think it might be helpful.
Good idea. Thank you, sir.
And thank you.
Okay, item number nine for possible action. Discussion to adopt Resolution 2021R-107, Amending Building Permit Fees. By increasing the fees by 5%, establishing a set of fees for certain projects and repealing Resolution 2018-R-034, which previously established the permit fees in 2018. Mr. Delair, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman Ingalls. Tom Delair for the record. With me to my left is Sam Booth, our deputy director of Community Development, and I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this today with you. We have prepared basically a brief analysis on the CPI index, which we showed in the background information on this agenda action sheet, which since 2018, over the past those three years, the CPI index was a total of 7% increase in our asking. And what you guys directed us, what you guys directed us staff to prepare was a 5% increase in our fees back in, I want to say July. And so I wanted to take an opportunity, we did present some information with this resolution. There's a chart which starts on page 393 of your packet, and it goes through, and it shows basically a red line of the fee schedule. We did change it slightly. I'm sorry, I'm on item 10. Too many items here. 384, 384 of the, 380, yeah, 384 is the schedule. And in the resolution, we did add a couple of fees, and I just kind of want to take some time to kind of explain to you guys and the public what these fees are for. And if you look at page 388 of the packet on item number nine, we have kind of explained to you, or tried to present basically what our evaluation is on these fees, and specifically what we're calling EZ applications. To kind of give you a history of where we've been with our permitting software, we have partnered with Washoe County, and the public can log into 1nevada.us on the web and get to a permit portal for our SLA program. It's a regional permit program, and the group is a superagency with SLA, but Washoe County is the actual contractor who, or the person who contracted with SLA. And then, and then the entities of Carson, or the city of Reno, City of Sparks, and then of course, Washoe County, Douglas County, they've now got their Washoe County Health Department on board, and there's a fire district, and I cannot recall for the life of me which fire district that is up in Reno, but I believe it's Washoe Fire District, have all started utilizing this as a permitting platform. And what that does for the region is allows the public one platform consistent with the permitting process. The individual entities can change the application. We can change some of the formatting, but the platform itself is the same, which really helps the user utilize the system in Reno and in Douglas County. I believe that's the intent staff had when they accepted and started analyzing and using SLA. And we have gone forward and added some permits to that digital system where an applicant can get on that, and it was 1NV, all one word, dot US is the website, and you can get a simple electrical permit. Residents are supposed to obtain an electrical permit if you're going to add any electrical to a home that has already previously been permitted. And then if you're going to swap out a fireplace, you can get a permit for that. Relocate a gas line. Your heating or air conditioning unit needs to be replaced. There should be a permit for that. Re-roofing, re-siding, water heater. I had to replace my water heater. You get a permit for that. And these permits online are just processed digitally. And then it's it's it gets logged into our system. And then the applicant or the owner of the property can then request an inspection from our team to go out and make sure that they installed that that unit properly. And so it gives us the ability to do the inspections. It's a fairly easy process. We don't have any plan review fee or plan review for that. So we weren't proposing a fee for those particular types of permits. And then and then in addition to that, there's a combination permit that we added on online as well, which would be like re-roofing, new windows and and re-siding. Maybe it's a one large project that you're doing on your home. And instead of going forward and doing a full blown building permit, you're not changing any of the structure. You're not changing the size of your windows. You're not changing the sheer that's placed on your home. You're just swapping out siding, creating a different look. It's an easy permit process. And the inspectors will come out and make sure that the tempered glass is in the right location, that no windows were increased, and that the roof material is on the roof. So so that's kind of that section there where the no plan review is required. And then when you skip down to the next piece, a permit required for plan review. These are, again, simple applications. There's maybe a new gas line, patio covers, generators, solar panels. You might add to an existing permit. So what we did is we took the average valuation for all of these EZ permits from the last year. And and we averaged them and came up with a valuation. So we set that valuation for each of these types of permits to come up with a permit fee. And then in the building department, a plan review fee is 65% of that permit fee. So that's what this table is showing you today. So I I just wanted to run through that and explain to you really what what we were what we were doing and what we were thinking. So with that, I'll see if Sam has anything else he wants to add. And we're available for any questions on what we've presented. Thank you, Sam Booth. Nothing to add. Thanks, Tom.
Okay, this is an action item. Any public comment, questions?
Recording in progress.
Can we bring the meeting back to order? Mr. Booth, were you talking about something? We had to cut. Public comment, that's right. Yeah, yeah, it was. She, yeah. Okay.
Not touching anything. Got, I've got electricity running through these veins. My name's Natalie Yanis. I'm with the Contractors Association of Truckee Tahoe. I had a couple of questions. So I see the new fee schedule in here, which, you know, I'm used to looking at like, you know, P&Ls, the profit and loss statements, income and costs. So I'm seeing a lot of the income here, but I'm not sure what the costs are that are related to that 5% increase and where they're going to be actually applied. I'm not sure how much SLA costs. If there was some clarification on that, that would be helpful for me so I could communicate it to our members. We're all about supporting staff and streamlining processes. But at the same time, you know, we want to see some accountability for the fees that are paid and permitting by 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 private business. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may. What you don't see here are the costs. And the reason you don't see the cost is because it's based on CPI index. The CPI index is listed in the resolution. And that is what is required by statute for county staff to be utilizing in order to increase the rates for building permit fees. So that is why the the 5% is there. And also, there's also a reference to the total amount of the CPI, which I believe was 7.0%. So what you're doing is basically coming in 2% under what you could have otherwise charged.
Thank you, Sam.
Mr. Mr. Taylor, can I ask you a real quick question in that regard? So so basically, NRS would not allow us to go even the 5% if that's not what was approved or allowed by NRS. Does that mean by CPI?
Yes, the statute does contain a provision where you can exceed the CPI, but you have to apply to the state in order to do so. And again, if, as long as you stay under the CPI, you know, on an annual basis, you don't have to apply to the state to go beyond that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any further comment from the audience? Marcia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marcia Johnson for the record. I do have two people online. If you would like to provide public comment on item number nine, please raise your hand now. No public comment at this time.
Thank you, Marcia. This is an action item. Seeing no further public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, we'll be looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you. I have moved for the adoption of Resolution 2021R-107, amending building permit fees by increasing the fees by 5%, establishing set fees for certain projects and repealing Resolution 2018R-034, which previously established the permit fees in 2018.
I'll second it. We have a motion by Commissioner Gardner, a second by Commissioner Tarkanian. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to item number 10 for possible action. Discussion to adopt Resolution 2021R-096, increasing community development application and permit fees by 5% and establishing a new administrative, new administrative fees for Carson City Health and Human Services and repealing Resolution 2019R-31, which previously established the amended community development fees in 2019. Mr. Ruth or Mr. Delair, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman Ingles. Tom Delair for the record. Sam Booth is here with me as well. I I want to first just point out, I I we found an issue with our printed information that was in the packet on page 398. I believe Marcia has passed out a copy of that revised sheet. I do have, I don't know how many left, 20 copies on the counter out on the hallway. We 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 left off the Building Division, Section 6 section. And the print area in Excel didn't go down to this table that we had at the last minute. I apologize for that inconvenience. Those fees that are listed in the Building section were already in the previous resolutions and part of our our fee schedule. So it, the fees are sitting there, shows, are shown there as the the prior fee. And then it's crossed out with the new fee. We did increase these fees 5% based on your your direction as well. These are all the community development application fees, admin fees. We did not increase the technology fee because the 4% technology fee is tacked on to the actual permit fee. So so technically, it's going to go up as well because the fee went up. So we didn't increase that one and and start double dipping on the increases. So I just want to make sure that was clear. And then the Health Department had come had come to us, I think, right after I started. I had met with the Health Department to see really about their contract that we have with them to discuss with them the services that they perform and kind of get a feel for for what they're doing. I know they're doing a great job and have really assisted the county and with through this COVID. really assisted the county and with, through this COVID, uh, mess, but, um, but they had, they have a couple of fees that they wanted to charge, uh, which you'll find on that same page, uh, 398, uh, where they want to do a reinspection fee. Uh, currently, their fee schedule is either in NAC or in the NRS. Uh, it is extremely com- complicated and complex, but these fees are not listed in there, and they asked that the, what they've done with their, up in Carson City is the Board of Supervisors have some fees that they've established, um, in addition to those in the NRS, and, uh, and they established a fee that they want to charge our, um, I guess, our businesses and our residences here as they, uh, do these inspections. Um, basically, it's just a reinspection fee, $50 is the proposed fee, and, um, and I think we have been charging a technology fee on those as well. Uh, the pre-application fee, so we do have quite a few, uh, businesses coming in to Douglas County, and the Health Department does spend some time on those pre-applications, and, um, I think this was a, like a $25 fee. I'm not sure if that is for, um, like a pre-application on just information that they're gonna, that the applicant's gonna receive from the Health Department prior to coming in for a formal permit, but it seemed kind of low, and, uh, and so we added it in there. It's $25. That's what they requested. And then, the seasonal farmer's market fee, and then the cottage food application fee. So, those four fees were what they requested us, um, to add. This will offset their service costs, uh, to Douglas County, and per our contract, we in turn, um, pay whatever the difference is between their time and their services that they provided and, and the, and what they've collected in revenue, and then that's what we reimburse them for. So, this will actually reduce our liability to the department, uh, over the year. And I, I, I don't know, I wasn't able to figure out an estimate on, on how much this would really generate for the Health Department because I don't, I don't have access to that data. So, um, and, and some of these are, are new fees that they are, are charging. So, um, anyway, I just wanted to, to clarify that. Um, and then, one other thing that we did do, uh, and this has been puzzling me for, for quite some time, and I went back, I think I understand the reasoning behind it, but, uh, back in 2000, and was it 17, 18, 18, I think, uh, the count, or the, the Community Development Department came to the board at the time, and they swapped, uh, the site improvement permit fee and the plan review fee. So, um, looking at what are, what we were charging, um, a develop, a development, uh, for a plan review fee was quite excessive, um, and we, and we did, um, uh, we did switch that back, uh, because I think the plan review fee is, uh, more in line, um, with what we were charging before as a permit fee. As an example, if we had like, I'd say a $400,000 project, um, the, the site improvement permit fee would have, or should be $8,650. Um, we were charging that as a plan review, and then the permit fee would be $2,524. And, and so we wanted to switch those back around to make them reflect really the services that we are, um, providing at that time. Uh, we do require the plan review fee as a deposit for those, for those applications that come to the office, and, um, and so the deposit is, is going to be substantially smaller, but it should be, uh, it should cover our costs of the plan review if they don't move forward on the project. Um, again, I'd like to put another plug in for, um, for doing a, a fee study, uh, that was part of the Moss Adams Audit, uh, findings for the department, and I'd really like to, to move that along, um, uh, as well, you know, as soon as I can identify some funding for that. Well, we'll try and get that going, and then that way we can make sure that our costs and our fees are in line with the services that we are providing. So, uh, with that, I don't, I would open it up for any questions that you guys may have on this table. It's quite lengthy, um, and, uh, we're available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Delair. Um, this is an action item, so we'll open it up to any questions or comments from the audience. Ms. Yanich?
Uh, thank you. Natalie Yanich with the Contractors Association of Truckee Tahoe. Um, I appreciate the fact that, uh, Tom had brought up the fact that you wanted to do the fee studies so that cost fees are in line with services. I think that that type of accountability and transparency is important for the public and the constituents and private business. Um, at the same time, I'm looking at this table, and now that I got this extra sheet here, and it seems like the request is to fund Health and Human Services from Building Division fees, um, which basically is, you know, having some private property owners with the burden and subsidizing another servicer program within Douglas County. Um, so I'm not seeing the benefit for, uh, the, um, person who's coming in paying those fees necessarily, uh, because I think that those could be budgeted elsewhere, and I don't think they should be borne on the back of people who are, you know, uh, coming in to get a building permit. Um, so those would be my comments. Um, of course, I'm always open to hear more about, you know, where the costs and budget, and if there is going to be a study and looking at some of those numbers so that I can better explain it to people. Um, when they ask me, why are we paying more for these fees, I would like to have an explanation for them. So, I appreciate your taking the time to, um, agendize this and listen to my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcia, is there anybody online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marcia Johnson for the record. There's no public comment online at this time.
Seeing no further public comment, we'll bring it back to the board, and open up for the board for any questions or discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Um, Chairman, if I may, uh, just to answer Natalie's, um, question, the, these aren't Building Division fees or Department fees. These, these are fees that are going to be charged by the Health Department to our businesses or residents, however they, they do their, um, their inspections as they perform those services. So, the Health Department will then charge whoever they're serving at the time. So, the people who are getting the service are paying for it, not the general fund. So, I just want to make sure that's, that's clear, and, and if Natalie has any other questions, I can see her after the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Delair.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
And I have one of you. Okay, you first. Commissioner Rice.
All right. Uh, I hate to show my ignorance in this, uh, this field. I know what a seasonal farmer's market fee is. What's a cottage food fee?
And I believe the cottage, cottage food fee is an inspection, like if you're going to package some, maybe you make cookies, you do it at a, like at the community center. I think you run out the community center's kitchen, make your own cookies, package it in a plastic thing and hand them out. Um, I, I believe it's the cottage food is that type of inspection. It is fairly new. Uh, if there's anybody else that could explain that a little better, that would be great, but, uh, I believe that's what that is for, is those kinds of things where they're making the food at home or at, uh, kitchen. And they have to still be inspected by the Health Department.
So, if I'm baking cookies and wrapping them in plastic and giving them away, I have to pay a fee?
No, for commercial, for commercial sales, or if you're going to advertise it, like, um, I, I guess.
I, I have a vision of this. I have a vision of Commissioner Rice sitting in the kitchen, toiling away, cooking, baking. Commissioner Rice, when it was a meeting at the lake, early on, wasn't there a discussion in regard to fees because they had been overlooked for some time, and there was, we had to bring, bring everything up to date?
As I recall, uh, yes. Um, it's been quite a while since we brought our fees into mind with the, the costs, and I believe that this is a result of that conversation or other conversations leading to this point. I, I assume that's correct.
Yeah, I recall the same thing because it was early on, and I don't know how it came up. Somebody came up, started talking, I believe Eric Nelson was, uh, with the county at the time, and, uh, it's like, we were way below, uh, the other rural counties, so. Anyway.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman? Uh, Commissioner Nozad?
Yeah, I want to display my ignorance in certain terms. What is a tech fee?
That, that's a technology fee. Technology for, it's an additional fee we charge, uh, based on the, the permit to pay for like a SLA IT department to service our service, servers which we need to have for servicing the public.
Tech as a tech.
Technology, technology, tech, yep.
Commissioner Gardner, do you have any recipes you want to talk about or?
No, I just wanted to know my cookies.
All right, this is an action item, aside from the levity, and, uh, do we hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Rice?
Let me get right back to the right page. Uh, we're having so much fun here. Um, Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution 2021 R-096, increasing community development application and permit fees by 5.0%, establishing new administrative fees for Carson City Health and Human Services, and repealing Resolution 2019, 2019 R-031, which previously established and amended community development fees in 2019.
I'll second that. We have a motion by Commissioner Rice, a second by Commissioner Nozad. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Chairman, and, uh, just one more comment. Um, we did do an analysis on the neighbors, uh, on the neighboring jurisdictions fees, and we are, even with what we're proposing, we're in line with, with where we were at before, and it's, it's all in line with how we were, how we were operating prior, previously.
Thank you, Mr. Booth and Mr. Delair. Uh, these are things we have to keep, uh, abreast of. Okay, item number 11 has been pulled for further discussion, and so we'll go to item 12. For presentation only, reports, updates from county commission members concerning the various boards and commissions that they may be a member of or liaison to, or meeting functions that they have attended. Commissioner Gardner?
Couple of quick comments, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Um, number one, uh, this coming Saturday night, uh, at Carson Valley Inn is our community, uh, recognition awards banquet, uh, hosted by the, uh, Carson Valley Chamber of Commerce, and I believe, are all five of us going or just four of us? Anyways, okay, so a lot of us will be there. That's, that's great. We have some great, uh, community volunteers, and, and so this will be our opportunity to.
Who's getting the award? Who's getting the award from the county?
What's that?
Who's getting the, the award for the county?
Liz Begovic, is it? Yeah. Who's with our animal services? Right. Great, great recipient. Uh, so, uh, I look forward to, uh, being in attendance with that. Uh, in addition to that, uh, this last Wednesday, uh, we had, which was hosted by the Carson Valley Visitors Authority, uh, we had our first, uh, what I would call, uh, Hotel Operators, Valley Hotel Operators Com, uh, Operators Conference. Uh, this was, uh, we had seven of our 12 hotel operators here on the valley floor attend that and, uh, go through a process of understanding exactly what the Visitors Authority brings to, uh, to the businesses and getting to, uh, an opportunity for those operators to meet each other and, and actually see each other eye to eye and, and talk about common issues and, and, uh, resolutions. So, I thought that was, uh, very, I had the opportunity to attend on behalf of this board, uh, and I, uh, appreciated that opportunity. And, uh, they are planning on going forward with this ad hoc, uh, type of conference on a, on a quarterly basis to, uh, try to get a little coordination amongst the hotel operators here on the valley floor. So, anyways, I wanted to, uh, share that with you and the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner. Any other comments from members of the board? Seeing none, we'll move to closing comments. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and the control of the Board of Commissioners, or those agenda items where public comments has not been already taken. Do we have any public comment?
Roger Adam, uh, I was watching this meeting after my opening comments and heard Sam Booth's what I would interpret as being very dismissive comments regarding the, um, outreach to the public on item number seven, the 26,200 square foot building, uh, and, or facility for crushing concrete and, and processing demolition waste and scrap metal processing. And, uh, I did hear Mr. Booth answer Commissioner Rice's question about the airport board, and maybe one reason he didn't answer it is because if you watch the video of the Planning Department October 12th meeting, you will see that that issue came up and they decided not to do that. Also, he did not answer the question about the residences, whether they had been notified. I have no doubt that all the minimum legal requirements were met in the Planning Commission's actions, but you might want to ask yourself, what's more important as far as the county is concerned? The input from businesses that are at the actual business park that will be exposed to this operation when they are working, or maybe a property owner that's sitting at home, maybe not even living in the area where this is occurring? And also, after my opening comments, had nothing to do with this meeting, but on my visit out to the Meridian Business Park, I did get a phone call from another one of the businesses in Meridian Park wanting to know if I could fax him or email him the petition, an opposition to ordinance 2021 1583, and of course, I did that. So, I would ask you to consider these issues prior to your second meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Any other comments from the audience? Mr. Cates?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just wanted to add some clarification to, um, some of the questions that were asked during the clerk treasures items. Um, and item number five, Commissioner Tarkanian asked about, um, who sets the reserve levels for the county. Um, so that is a combination of Nevada revised statute and, uh, county policy, board policy. So, I just want to clarify that, and the, uh, other question I think was.
I'm going to clarify. I, you said by, uh, board policy, but who made the policy and how long ago, and I just, that didn't really clarify for me.
So, there is a board adopted policy. I'd have to look at the date. I think we did that maybe last year. Uh, the current version of that, I'd be happy to send that to you, and it's also governed by statute as well. But I can send you a copy of that. Um, and the other question was on, uh, number six, I think it was Commissioner Rice asked about, uh, if the CFO had reviewed that policy. I just wanted to confirm that that did come to the, uh, Internal Review Committee, which is my leadership team, which included Ms. Willoughby. We had extensive discussion on it, and nobody had any problems with it.
In regard to this matter, uh, it has always been a policy that I experienced in corporate America in businesses that we always wanted to have a reserve of about six months to survive just about anything, and that is pretty much in line with the reserves that the county has, so, um, it's, it's just kind of using Kentucky windage. So it's just kind of using Kentucky windage. Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Jerry?
Jerry Turner, continuing. Also activating through milleriate chemicals in the brain that some from vaccines that can control human body functions, emotions and feelings. Some activated by certain pulse frequencies, controlling the human body by sending certain pulse frequencies. Pulse frequencies can target any human body parts frequency causing harm and damage by the correct frequency for the body part frequency, causing injuries, needing medical attention, making huge profits for the medical and pharmaceutical industries by those who own and control 5G, the globalist money barons. One particular pulsating wave can cause extreme anger and enough to kill. Low pulsating frequencies, microwaves and below cause body damage over long periods of time. YouTube quote Dr. Thomas Cohen, COVID-19 and 5G, "What happens when you electrify the earth?" People and medical professionals not knowing the truth of what's causing injuries, illnesses, diseases and viruses. And viruses. Medical professionals not knowing the truth about, from where their own journals and industry. Read Dr. Judy Mikulowicz's book, "Play of Corruption: Restoring the Faith in the Promise of Science." Mikulowicz exposes Anthony Fauci, head of the Globalist Monitoring Board, the GPMB, and the GMP documents wanting a minimum of two pandemics. Fauci pushing the virus for those who are on, who were on Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation's seven years and GAVI vaccine producers and SEPI pharmaceuticals. I wonder if Fauci just would profit? I'm sure he does. The goal of 5G, globalist creators is to bring in 5G being faster, which enables artificial intelligence, synthetic humans and the Internet of Things. Artificial intelligence, AI now in computers, which teach the computers how to teach themselves. AI is now being connected to the brain via 5G nanobots, the Internet, a mass injection to the brain and nanobots from geoengineering, chemtrails and vaccines. Nanobots and viruses and vaccines. A reason for the vaccine injections being forced on us today that work in conjunction with 5G that kills cells, death, us called COVID-19. Synthetic humans are in the process of being made to connect with AI and other, to be continued with the next public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Any further public comment? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Whoops, online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marcia Johnson for the record. I do have public comment online.
Oh, you can't leave.
Mr. Slate, do you have public comment, closing public comment?
I do, and let me know when the Commissioners are seated and I'll begin.
They are seated. Please state your name for the record and we'll start your time.
Ms. Slate. On item number seven today, while NRS apparently only requires, for the first reading of an ordinance, that the title be read into the record, I don't believe that NRS mandates that no further information can be provided at that time. Certainly, that is not the way that ordinances were considered in Douglas County for the vast majority of this century when the complete presentation, public comment, discussion and a vote occurred at the first reading. I still believe that it is in the best interest of the Board as well as the public that much more information be provided at the time of the first reading. Only providing that information less than a week prior to the second reading is not in anyone's interest. In this case, that would include at a minimum the required findings for a zoning map amendment and the actual and master plan land use and zoning of the surrounding properties. Regarding the noticing of surrounding properties, I believe that Mr. Booth is likely correct that the property owners were properly noticed, but they did not inform their leaseholders who own businesses there. That is unfortunate since a zoning amendment such as this one proposed could materially affect their businesses. I believe that the code should be corrected to change to require that. And owners should inform the leaseholders whose business might be affected. I believe in this case, the staff should encourage the owners to do just that and that the Board consider changing the code so that the people whose businesses might be affected would always be notified. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No further public comment at this time.
Now the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.